So Wolf Lab is a new learning environment. It's more based on student ability to self motivate, move at their own pace, and kind of ask for questions when they feel that's needed. They have more freedom in terms of where they want to work. They're not confined to a desk all day. They have...
Good evening. Welcome to the May 19th West Claremont Regular Business Meeting. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Patton.
Present.
Mr. Rudy.
Present.
Mr. Chumley.
Present.
Ms. Samborn.
Present.
And Mrs. Spencer Levsko. She'll be a few minutes late.
Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
First up is the motion to adopt the agenda. Would someone like to make a motion?
I'm moved.
Thank you, Mr. Rudy. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Chumley. Is there any discussion? Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Rudy.
Yes.
Mr. Chumley.
Yes.
Ms. Samborn.
Yes.
Mr. Patton.
Yes.
Four yes.
Looks like we're moving on to recognition. Dr. Fultz.
Good evening, everyone. This is always an exciting time when we get to recognize our community and our staff. Our first recognition tonight is for Merwin Elementary's Cardiac Response Team. Merwin Elementary's Cardiac Response Team, or they're called CERT, has gone above and beyond to ensure the safety of students and staff in the event of a cardiac emergency. This volunteer team of staff members became CPR certified, developed a comprehensive emergency response plan, and conducted practice drills to prepare for real-life scenarios. In collaboration with Project Adam and Cincinnati Children's Hospital, the team worked to meet all criteria for the Head's Heart Safe School Designation. So we are proud to recognize the CERT team members. As I call your name, please come forward to Josh. Aaron Parker, Trista Harold, Lori McMillan, Cindy Begg, Jill Everett, Karen Schaffner, Victoria McIntosh, Christie Brown, Sarah Long, Megan Brin, Holly Shoemaker, Mark Hall, Sean Smith, and Charlie Toll. It's always the last one, Josh. It's always the last.
This is round three.
There we go. All right, let's give them a round of applause.
So before you guys sit down, I was a part of your debrief. Is there anything that you would add about what was learned through this process and why you think it's important at Merwin and eventually all of our schools? And anybody? I know everyone looks to Erin, but she doesn't have to talk. Anybody can.
Just that we gotta be ready to go when things happen like that, and that our team will step in like that.
The partnership with Pierce Township is so great, too. Like, in the drill, we actually timed us doing a mock 911 call and seeing what that response time would need for them to come in. We're just amazing all the time in that way. We actually did it one of the modulars, so that they had to, like, navigate around. Like, we made it the most difficult it could be to see how well it worked. So I'm really proud of the team, because they just jumped right to action, and they always do when there's small or big.
Yeah. Well, and I was impressed at the debrief, because it's like you've got all these important people from Children's Hospital, from the police department, the fire department, and it's like a lot of pressure. Everyone's staring, saying, "Okay, what did you do right? What did you do wrong?" And I just let everyone handle that so beautifully. And I know we had a custodian who was headed out. His shift was over, and he was headed out. And so he stayed on duty to, like, take care of this. And so, just very impressive. Thank you for being the trailblazers in this work.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
Next, we have the Purple Star Schools. West Claremont proudly recognizes its schools that have earned the Purple Star Award for the commitment to supporting military-connected students and families. With trained staff liaisons, accessible resources, and ongoing efforts to create a welcoming school environment, these schools ensure that military families feel supported and valued as a part of our community. This is the first year that Withersville Tabasco Elementary School has received the Purple Star Award. Amelia Elementary, Merwin Elementary, and Willowville Elementary are all being renewed after three years of being a Purple Star Schools. So we're proud to recognize the following elementary schools, and I'm going to call their representative to come up and get the award. So for Withersville Tabasco Elementary, Angela Nicodemus. Come on up. For Amelia Elementary, Gretchen Briggs and Kennedy Geiser. Geisler, sorry. Okay, I knew her maiden name, so that threw me off for a second.
Who's this girl?
Merwin Elementary's Aaron Parker and Trista Harold. And Willowville Elementary's Kevin Jones. Let's give them all another round of applause. The board's getting their exercise tonight. Ups and downs here. Next, we want to recognize a special group at Amelia Elementary. Amelia Elementary's dedicated paraprofessionals play a vital role in supporting students and teachers. Their hard work, flexibility, and willingness to adapt to student needs makes a significant impact on student success. Their contributions are essential to the daily operations of Amelia Elementary School, and we are truly grateful for their commitment. We're proud to recognize the following Amelia paraprofessional aides. So if I call your name, please come up. Bernard Eichler, Kristen Packer, Jasmine Deekman, Stephanie Bush, Amber Athan, Dulce Widerhold, Kelly Watson, Rachel Reinhardt, and Teresa Martin. Now, don't do what you used to do when you were a kid with subs and give Josh a different name.
So you guys aren't getting off the hook. So what... You don't always get the attention of the board like this, and we are really proud of our paraprofessionals at Amelia and across the school district. I'm just curious if you have anything that you would share with the board. Things that you're most proud of, things that surprised you the most about this job? Because we all say that kids today need different things, and some days really surprise you. So is there anything that you would want to share, just to give people a taste? I know everyone's censoring themselves, but just a taste of what the role is and what you love about it, so.
Well, I just want to say thank you to our amazing leader, because I feel like we do such a good job as a team, and we have such a good team behind us. Oh, but as far as the job goes, do you front or rap? I love what I do.
It's hard to put it on paper, isn't it?
It really is, but there's no way to put a job description on it. But we definitely need the team, because that's what...
This is a great team. We really... We thought we had a great team.
Well, that's why you're being recognized, because teaming and collaboration is so important here in West Claremont, and you guys stand out. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. So next, we have the West Claremont School District Volunteers of the Year. The West Claremont proudly recognizes the 24-25 Volunteers of the Year for their dedicated service to our schools. Their extra time, support, and care make a meaningful impact on our students and staff. We are grateful for all that they do. We will call up the principal to recognize each building's Volunteer of the Year and how they contributed to the building. So first, let's start with Amelia Elementary and Principal Shane Short.
Shane loves going first. That's usually what he says.
I say that all the time. Yeah. So we are deeply grateful to Joseph and Carrie Armstrong for their years of dedicated service to the support of our Veterans Day programs at Amelia Elementary. Their commitment to honoring our veterans and creating meaningful experiences for our students has made a lasting impact on our school community. Through their time, energy, and thoughtful planning, they've helped us build a spirit of gratitude and patriotism in our young Tigers, as well as helping us receive our second Purple Star Award this year. It's with great appreciation that we recognize Mr. and Mrs. Armstrong as our Volunteers of the Year, and thanks for your senior contributions. We couldn't do it without them.
So we'll bring all the volunteers up?
Yeah. That's good.
By school or...
Yeah, just bring them all up. We'll do elementary, then we'll do secondary. How's that?
Good. All right. Our next school is Clough. Principal Curtis Mason could not be here, so Mr. Dreward is filling in for him.
All right. If I could have Kara Fights to come on up, please? Mr. Mason writes, he says, "Mrs. Fights has been an amazing asset to our PTO this year with helping to organize and run multiple PTO events here at Clough. She also takes care of our PTO newsletter, which is no small task. She is a frequent volunteer in our classroom, and her involvement is appreciated just beyond words. Thank you, Mrs. Fights, for all you've done at Clough Elementary. You truly make a difference."
Next, we have Principal Josh Young from Holly Hill Elementary.
Attorney General, Superintendent. Unfortunately, our volunteer couldn't be here this evening. Mr. Terry Brothers is a retired engineer, and he said he can do what he wants. I said, "Yes, sir." No, I'm just kidding. He's in Gatlinburg, a great guy. I'm kind of like a used car salesman, any time people are around the school, in the building, outside the building. So on Election Day, we have poll workers, so I'm down there flinging my card, trying to get volunteers in there. Mr. Brothers took me up on it back in November. He's been a phenomenal guy. So I guess, just to kind of encompass the different hats he wears, there was like the different names that the kids call him, like Mr. Terry, Uncle Terry, Grandpa Terry, all those things. I encourage Mr. Terry. But being a retired engineer, he does everything from basic math facts, he helps with geometry, but he volunteers two, three days a week, spends a few hours in the hallways, in the classrooms, working with students one-on-one or in small groups. And just like, it's to the point now where kids will ask when their time with Mr. Terry is coming up, or they'll be jealous and say that their older sister works with him, like, when's their turn? Teachers are fighting over him, so just a great guy. So we're very honored to have Terry, wish he was here, but he's enjoying the mountains right now, so.
Next, we have Principal Aaron Parker from Merwin Elementary.
We're recognizing Liz Rocha and her little, her youngest. This is like, this is Liz, like, all the time. There's always one kid attached to her. She's been the PTO treasurer and member since 2021 at Merwin. She attends literally every evening event from the start to the finish to ensure its success. She supports the school day events by ordering and delivering items for our PBIS rewards. Some of those things could be like a trunkload of donuts and milk that she brings for us. She's a parent of a West Claremont Middle School Wolf, a second grader, a preschool student, and one still to come my way, I think. When it comes to volunteering, Liz's entire family is involved, and I joke very often with her children that they could run the place instead of me. So we're just so appreciative of Liz.
Next, we have Principal Lisa Courtney from Summerside Elementary.
Hello. It is my honor to recognize Mrs. Sadie Williams as our Volunteer of the Year at Summerside School this year. Mrs. Williams has been on the executive board for our PTO for the past two years, serving as a leader and champion of our school in every way possible. Mrs. Williams goes above and beyond in making every event at Summerside special, including details that are inclusive and so thoughtful in all your do. She seeks opportunities to support students and staff in big and small ways, ensuring that our PTO is a true partner in our program and that all students are able to engage in what the PTO has to offer. From making sure that every student gets a book at book fair, to making sure that our car line runs well, to creating an incredible Veterans Day celebration to honor our veterans. Miss Williams is beyond talented at seeing the big picture and the special details needed to make the greatest impact. She's a powerhouse. She gets it done, and her family's support has been much appreciated, too. Her husband here, Mr. Williams, and Mrs. Williams will be going down in fame or in legendary status for being the glowing-in-the-dark stick figures at Summerside for the Halloween Hunt or for the Spooktacular, for being the best hang-it-up-get-it-done team that has seconded nine. Her leadership has been paramount to our continued success, and we're so thankful for your tireless hours and efforts to lead our PTO. We're going to miss her and her outgoing fifth grader and family, and we wish you best on all your adventures ahead. Thank you.
You can introduce her to Jake after this meeting.
Next, we have Principal Kevin Jones from Willowville Elementary.
We would like to recognize Nancy Miller. You will not find a more dedicated, passionate, and knowledgeable volunteer than Nancy Miller. Nancy has a strong connection to our district. She was a West Claremont employee for 42 years. Forty-two years, spending 35 of those years as a teacher at Willowville. Since retiring, she's been giving up one morning each week for the past four years. She's there every week to help in fourth grade. She helps in a multitude of ways, whether she is listening to students read, working with a small group on comprehension strategies, guiding students on their writing assignments, chaperoning field trips, laminating or running copies. Nancy continues to make a positive impact at Willowville. We're grateful for her. You name the task, and Nancy will always help with a smile. She knows the students' names, and they know that she cares about them. If you ask her why she comes each week, she will not hesitate to tell you that it's fun to work with the students and to be able to make a difference. So thank you, Nancy, for all of your work. Thank you.
Next, we have Principal Sue Lippman-Hall from Withersville Tabasco Elementary.
Hi, good evening. Mrs. Julie Gore exemplifies dedication, compassion to support WT's library in first-grade classrooms. She is a prominent champion to engage our students with literacy, library procedures, and supportive teachers during this weekly commitment. She consistently, two-plus hours a week, on her own time, comes in every single week to WT. Mrs. Gore is an asset to WT's focus on building the capacity of all stakeholders to create experiences to improve our student achievement as well.
We appreciate you, Ms. Gore.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have Principal Jake Colgan from West Claremont Middle School.
Good evening. I'm very excited to introduce Ms. Amber Kleiman as our Volunteer of the Year. So as our PTSO president, she might be, yeah, I mean, I think it's safe to say she's one of the hardest-working people in our building, whether it's single-handedly putting on grade level dances, if it's organizing breakfast for staff on PD days. She really can and does do it all, including our field day for tomorrow, which hopefully we don't get rained out for. But she's just tireless, she's a tireless worker and a tireless advocate for our kids and is always a constant presence in our building. Our staff and our student experience would not be the same without her, and she deserves all the recognition we can give her. So thank you, Amber.
All right. And finally, we have Associate Principal Angela Fallhaber to introduce West Claremont High School.
Our Volunteer of the Year is Laura Kowas. Laura has a long history of being first in line to lend a hand whenever and wherever it's needed. She has devoted countless hours to supporting PTSO, not only at the high school, but also during her time at the middle school. From coordinating school projects to leading community-driven events, she consistently steps up in meaningful ways. For the past several years, Laura has organized and hosted a carpool to ensure the students in our district have a reliable way to get to and from school, even when her own daughter started to drive herself. Laura continued to support the carpool efforts. She has led initiatives that provided much-needed items to students and staff, showing compassion, creativity, and a strong commitment to service. Her gift for communication has strengthened family engagement across our school community. Whether it's spreading the word about important events or helping parents stay informed through social media, she is a trusted and valued connection between home and school. Laura exemplifies the spirit of West Claremont, and we are truly grateful for all she continues to do.
Okay, let's give them all another big hand.
Before you guys have a seat, I just, you know, Natasha's too sense. I just want to thank you for keeping the spirit of volunteerism alive in West Claremont. Especially, I know Mrs. Gore, not even having family or children in the school district, dedicating those years, that consistency that you bring to Willowville, just incredible. And I'll say, for Laura and Amber, I know you guys have been up here on this stage before, and I know as you progress in the system, fewer people are standing beside you. And so I just give you all the credit in the world for your commitment to our secondary schools and trying to build that army of volunteers. And speaking of army of volunteers, thank you so much for your military, your love of service to our country and what you bring to our students. You're also a face in the crowd that just keeps coming back year over year over year. Really, all of you have those faces in the crowd that just stay with us, committed, and we just appreciate what you do so much. Don't underestimate the power that you have. And my final thank you, really, is thank you for what you do for our principals. I put our principals on a very high pedestal in this school district. They are talented people, they work hard, and they can't do their job without people like you. So thank you for every little thing that you do for them. That really means the world. Thank you.
So at this point, we're going to take about a 10, 15-minute break. We're going to go out and have, we've got cookies and refreshments out there. We'll be back in about 10 or 15 minutes. We'll be back in about ten or fifteen minutes.
Yep. He's gonna, he's gonna start trying to get the video, so.
We are back from the reception.
Seven forty. Yes. So, tonight's video, WC Strong video, is from the Wolf Lab at the high school. This is the first year of this program. And just this last week, two students from the Wolf Lab went up to the Stay in the Game Conference in Columbus with a few of us from the district. They represented the Wolf Lab on a, on a student panel to talk about innovative programming in schools that's keeping kids engaged, keeping them wanting to come to school. So, they represented us very, very well. This video is to help give a deeper look into what a Wolf Lab experience is. And if I was describing it in a quick nutshell, this is a high school opportunity. We have five teachers who work in an intervention special, or four teachers in interventions. What is it, five or four? Five with intervention, is it six or five?
Four.
Yeah, four plus one, okay. And they, they work together, they, they serve in the media center, so they've got access to, to both floors, so they have a different kind of classroom environment. Students are more self-directed, so a lot of times if you're talking to a Wolf Lab kid, they'll say, "Well, this is really preparing me for college because I've gotta really have to plan my time management and I have to access teachers." Not just once a day, I have access to the, access to them throughout the day and I have to like plan my studies and prioritize. So, those are the kinds of things they talk about. But, it's multifaceted. This video will give you a sense. But, what I'm most grateful for is just the creativity of the administration and the teachers who signed up to do this, to provide a program that represents the entire student body. So, it's, it's not any one kind of group. It really reflects the demographics of West Claremont High School and is giving our students an edge on building independence and lifelong skills that they need to, to reach a portfolio of graduate skills. So, now, we're ready.
So, Wolf Lab is a new learning environment. It's more based on student ability to self-motivate, move at their own pace, and kind of ask for questions when they feel that's needed. They have more freedom in terms of where they want to work. They're not confined to a desk all day. They have a special type of furniture. They have desks, if they would like desks. But, they can float between the upper and lower media centers and really just choose to work on the subjects that they want to work on, while also having that support from teachers to keep them on track for graduation.
This is the first year of the Wolf Lab and there are already one hundred and twenty students enrolled. Right now, it is only open to juniors and seniors.
We have every type of student in Wolf Lab and I think that's the best part about Wolf Lab is it doesn't matter if you're a straight-A student or if school hasn't been your thing the past two, three years. We have kids who take AP Governments, who are super-high-level kids, take other AP classes, CCP classes, out in a traditional classroom. And we have kids who are identified and have IEPs, who get the support they need in here from our intervention specialist. But, the best part is, is our intervention specialist doesn't just help kids with IEPs. She's able to help all students in this environment. So, kids are getting a more individualized learning approach in this environment.
There are five teachers assigned to the Wolf Lab, including math, science, history, and English. So, students are still taking traditional courses, but in a non-traditional setting.
We teach all of the same standards that the state of Ohio gives us. We teach, we give all the same assessments so that we can compare data from inside the Wolf Lab to outside of the Wolf Lab. We just have a less structured environment of how that's portrayed.
I joined Wolf Lab because of a, what was, what was at this point an experimental program where I'd be able to work at my own pace, which is something I have definitely needed a lot in my academics because of what I do for a hobby. It is incredibly time-consuming. So, being able to work at my own pace is very vital. My hobby is, I do actively track weather systems, more particularly severe weather systems, across the United, across the eastern tier of the United States, anywhere from the Rocky Mountains all the way to the Atlantic coast. And I do have a lot of different programs that I need to use for that. I do see myself going into university after high school, more particularly Oklahoma University for meteorology, and eventually becoming something similar to what my father does. My father does, he storm chases, but he's also a contract meteorologist.
Wolf Lab, so I'm someone, I can't sit down. Like, I have to move my brain. If I'm listening to a teacher lecture, I'm not learning. So, Wolf Lab has helped me so much because I get to move around and I get to talk and I get to like do my work at my own pace. And it really has like helped me improve my grade and I feel like I'm just not talking to myself in here. Like, I'm like interacting, like I'm making new connections and new friends.
Both Riley and Lexi say they've benefited significantly from the Wolf Lab.
Wolf Lab has worked out a lot for me. It's done very well. This year, consecutively, has had some of my best grades I've ever had in any consecutive period. Especially, my overall GPA for any consecutive year definitely would be, this year, is the best because of the environment that Wolf Lab allows for me to work in.
And then math, math used to be my worst subject and I, like, this is the first time I've ever had an A in math. So, being in Wolf Lab, it definitely makes me more independent and makes me hold myself accountable for all the classwork that I have to do.
You know, we're, we really work to move through all of our content and make sure that the kids are prepared for their state test. And I don't think science is necessarily the student's favorite subject. And so, biology, it was very hard to fool this kid and engage him in a traditional classroom. This year, I have that same student in chemistry and he is thriving in chemistry. He comes in ready to learn every day because he knows that he has ownership of when he can work on it, how long to work on it. He's not confined to a ninety-minute bell.
Mrs. Hollinger explains the skills these students are learning and how it can help them in the future after graduation.
Yeah, so the, I really feel like the value of Wolf Lab is that we're giving kids the opportunity to take ownership of their own learning, be accountable, learn how to motivate themselves. Like, these soft skills that are needed for the real world and in real-world jobs sometimes get lost in a traditional classroom because everybody's moving at the same pace. In here, it gives that, those skills needed back to the students to figure out, but with the support of a teacher.
I would say that West Claremont Strong would probably be, to me, would be a sense of unity, which a large sense of unity does here, does exist in the community. But, I'd also say that it is a sense of success as well because a lot of success can be found here in this district.
West Claremont Strong, I definitely think it brings the community together. It's making us stronger, it's building us into a more like better environment. Like, it's like giving, getting us out there and everything. And I definitely giving, getting us out there and everything. And I definitely think, like, when people hear West Claremont Strong, it's like, we're out there. Like, we're doing good.
We are West Claremont Strong. What is your WC Strong story?
One of the coolest things about this program is the community they've built. If you take a tour in there and you walk through, people like Riley try to stop you and say, oh, I have the best grades ever. Or they say a goal that they met. The, the community is very supportive. They set personal goals. They cheer each other on. It's just very special. And I think these kids are creating memories in high school that maybe they wouldn't have otherwise, just mixed in with the different groups that they get to hang out with. So it's very cool, and I'm proud of them. Thank you, Becky, for creating that for us. Appreciate it.
Next, looks like we have public speaking. I do not believe we have any cards, so we will move on to the consent agenda. First up looks like is Dr. Foltz.
Thank you. In front of you is the personnel agenda for May nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. On the agenda, we have the retirement of Amy Store, the Director of Secondary Teaching and Learning. This is her twentieth year in the district. Lisa May Ellis, a reading specialist at Holly Hill. This is her thirty-first year in the district. Jonathan Souders, a PE teacher at West Claremont High School, his twenty-ninth year in the district. And Lorraine La Palmer, a cafe worker at WT, and with her ninth year in the district. So we wish them well on their, their next adventure. Also in front of you is the resignation of one high school principal, six teachers, three paraprofessional aides, and one cafeteria worker. The agenda also includes the proposed hiring of eight teachers, one custodian, and three paraprofessional aides. The agenda also includes the reassignment of one part-time paraprofessional aide at Willoughby to one full-time paraprofessional aide at Summerside. This is the time of year where we, we bring forward certified, classified, and administrative staff for contract renewals in their respective levels. So on the agenda, we have the proposed approval for moving eighteen teachers from a limited contract to a continuing contract, eleven classified staff from a limited contract to a continuing contract. We also have the proposed approval for administrative placement on the twenty-five, twenty-six salary schedule, exempt staff placement on the twenty-five, twenty-six salary schedule, classified contract renewals for the twenty-five, twenty-six salary schedule following a one-year or two-year renewal, exempt contract renewals for the twenty-five, twenty-six salary schedule following a two-year renewal, limited contract renewals for certified teachers for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year by school, part-time paraprofessional and offices assistant contract renewals for twenty-five, twenty-six school year. On the agenda, we have the proposed approval for extended days for our support staff. This allows our support staff time to close out this school year and begin the next school year, and it also allows support, to support any summer work that we've done. On the agenda, we have the proposed approval for supplemental contracts for curriculum leaders, elementary performers, multiple coaches. We also have the proposed approval for multiple unpaid leave of absences, multiple substitutes, and multiple school volunteers and student teachers. Every year, we have to bring forward our renewal of how we pay our daily rate for our subs. So that is on here as well. It's not changed. It's the same thing that we had for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And then finally, in the work beyond the contract section, proposed approvals for elem, for enrollment and district support, curriculum development, and summer school support if needed. This concludes the review of the personnel agenda submission for your consideration.
Thank you, Dr. Foltz.
All right.
Yes.
Okay, just checking. All right, good evening. So tonight, we're gonna talk a little bit about our resolution for our architect. One of the things that the district does is they contract the services from an architect. We've done this in the past. We've done it over the last several years. What we use the architects for are ongoing district improvement projects that we do have throughout the year. For example, this year, we were under a contract through, I guess it would have been June fifth, with SHP. During that time, we contracted them to help us with our master facility plan, and then also ongoing district improvements projects. That contract is, some of the things that they did for us over the past year, when we had the compressors at the middle school, they worked with us on that. If you remember back to the middle school, when we had a crack in the wall, they also come in with us, get the engineers in to see what that wall, was that a weight-bearing wall, or was it cosmetic? And we found out that it was cosmetic, because it was covering up some pipes. And so Chuck uses them, Dan uses them, as we go throughout the year on different building projects. They help us secure the lowest costs, lowest bids for particular projects. Obviously, if over fifty thousand goes out. But I think that one of the things that we do utilize them for a lot throughout the year, if we were to try to do this alone, it'd be very, very difficult. And we need their expertise. We need them to focus in on safety as our number-one priority as well. As when you look at aging buildings, and you look at some of the things that happen in aging buildings, you want them on board with us. And so one of the things that we'll do as we move forward, if you remember back in April, we put the RFQ out at the end of April, and that was due through May seventh. What we did in this RFQ is we made it as comprehensive enough that we would include, if the ballot issue would have passed, it would have also included those buildings that would have been a part of that LFI. So we wanted to be able to get those timelines and stay within that budget on that LFI. But we also wanted to put in there ongoing district-wide improvements. So when you look back at the documents on the B one-on-one, you're gonna look at, you're gonna see four different things. You're gonna see, first, it's gonna be district improvement projects, and that, those are all locations in the district. You're also gonna see Amelia, WT, and Clough. That is if we were to pass the ballot issue, we would have gotten what they would have done, and their timelines. We were really looking at the timelines that they were able to satisfy if we were to pass the ballot issue. What I'm asking the board to, or what we're asking the board to approve tonight is that first area where it was district-wide improvements. We need to utilize those for upcoming district-wide improvements. What might those be? Right now, we have two different areas. We have the middle school gym roof that needs attention immediately. We know that. We're looking at that. So that would be the first thing that we would go into with our architects. The other one is, you saw the pictures from Holly Hill as well, with the windows. That is gonna be another thing that we're gonna have to do, and then other things that come up. We'll utilize them for HVAC, that we have any HVAC issues that we would have throughout the buildings, electrical, and so forth. And so we would continue to do that. What I'm asking the board to do is select SHP as our leading design and authorized negotiation agreement for district-wide improvement projects, not new construction. It was one of those four that was listed in the RFQ. It was the top one. And we had the, you know, Dan and Chuck said, we, we wanna make this comprehensive, regardless of what happened on the ballot issue, so that when we get the results, we can go right into our summer project, we can go right into the things that we would need, and we will prioritize what we would need to fix as we move forward. Right now, the roof of the middle school, Holly Hill windows, and hopefully, nothing else comes about, but we know that we will. And we need the architects to help us as we move through that process. So I would ask the board to approve that resolution.
So I have a question. On this nineteen-plus million, so it's just for the Holly Hill windows and the project and design for the West Claremont Middle School?
The nineteen-point-one million was the budget that we gave in the RFQ. So when we went to those LFIs, where there's additional classrooms, those media centers that we had, and the, uh...
Technology and furniture and safety.
And safety. And so that was the encompass, to give them a budget, so they would say, okay, this is what we can do within that budget. This is the timeline that we can do within that budget. That was not a cost. That was a budget that they would have to come in and tell us how they would meet that budget with their RFQ.
Okay, so we'll have probably some money left over for future use?
No, there's no money involved in that. That was just a budget for those particular projects. Those projects are not on the table now. We didn't pass the ballot, so those, those are gone. So the only thing that we're doing with the RFQ would be district-wide improvement projects.
Okay, but you have to have money in order for the SHP to come and do this design and project for us. Where's the money coming from? If you're not going to use this money, where are you getting the money from the taxpayers?
There's no money coming in from this, and this would then let Dan be able to answer that one.
So here, I think this, this needs to be clarified. So through that process with the RFQ, there was a scope of work that was identified. A lot of that was tied to the master facility plan. That didn't happen, right? We know on May sixth, that, that didn't occur.
Right.
One of the other, other parts of the RFQ and evaluating the services is the need that we have ongoing all the time, that Mr. Lefada has, when a boiler goes down, when we need to do the windows at Holly Hill, when the roof's at, at any of our buildings, okay? You need the professional expertise to do the design, the engineering, to do the bid specs and all that. One of the things that, that the board needs to rest assured is that when we use them, you'll know what those projects are. The projects aren't just gonna pop up and you not see them, okay? The projects will be put in front of you, okay? You'll see that, okay? That'll happen. So it's not like they're in that document right now. They're to come, and what we're really doing is securing the services, so that when those projects come, if we decide to do the windows, if we do have funding in our permanent improvement fund to do those things, those will come to the board, too, and then we'll kick in the services of the architect.
And there's money in the budget for these services. Like, that's where the money comes from. It's already in the budget.
For the services of the architect.
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanna make sure we had the money in our budget to do this.
Yes.
Correct.
Gotcha.
So I do have a question. So this nineteen million, that is not happening, so why is it on in the form?
So, so when we, when we did the RFQ?
Right.
Okay, which was back in...
In advance of the decision.
In the vapor, we put the RFQ out, so that we would have those LFIs that would be, if we were to pass the bond issue.
So it didn't pass?
It didn't pass.
So you don't do it. It's comprehensive.
So we wouldn't modify this statement at all? It would just stay the way it is?
Because it was already in place before. So it's just, it included everything under the sun that could possibly happen. So we would understand, like, what their costs would be and what timeline they would project. So it's just, we just won't do that. There's no commitment, if that's what you're meaning. Like, just because it's written there, it's not a commitment. It's just, the commitment is about the services, not about the details.
We just want them to...
Yeah, the commitment is them, not the details.
Right, and the, and the cost for these district-wide improvements are to be determined, you know, as we go out. And as we go to the roof, and we look at the roof, we look at the windows, we get the bids. And then, as we bring those, we'll bring those forward. And so when we go into our building usage report, which I believe we'll do next month, you'll start to see, if you remember the charts where all those red in all those buildings, remember those charts where they had all the red? Those are the things that we'll have to prioritize over the next three to five years that we know about. The things that are uncertain are the ones that scare me, and scare the treasurer, and the superintendent, and Chuck. And so those are the things that you have to look at, and when a compressor goes out, or you have to replace the electrical panels, the eleven electric panels at the middle school, that are big dollar amounts. And so, you know, hopefully, we, we can go, and hopefully, those won't happen. But when they do, as we talked about when we went through the bond issue, when you start to put money into operations, it's gonna take money from the general fund. And I don't wanna speak out of turn, but we talked about this over and over again. This is what happens. And so we're just sitting here with buildings that are from nineteen-sixties, hoping that something doesn't bad happen.
Does this company assist with our modulars, if those become a place?
So, good question.
Doing plumbing, doing electric work? I mean, that's not just plopping a modular. You have to do a, a whole process, fire department, the permit department. Do they also assist at the middle school? Again, the roof has been leaking.
Can I say something?
You can, absolutely, Chuck.
So to do any of these projects that you just mentioned, and then the roof at the middle school, you have to have an architect to do that, to keep you current with the codes. And also, they, they know the sources. They know the labor. They know the materials. And they, they work for us, so they can advise you. So if we were not, if we, if this recommendation wasn't before you tonight, we would have to bring one to you before we could even start the middle school roof. We would have to do an RV, again, for an architect or company to advise us and how to, and legally take us through the process of the middle school roof. So tonight is just simply to start the process of these repairs that we need, with an architect kinda on orbit through the entire process.
So again, what I'm hearing is, is that we just can't pull a modular in and park it, right? Has to have permits, has to...
Yeah, it's not an RV we can't pull in. I like it.
Extend your cords.
But to answer your question, yes, they will help us in determining engineering, going through the plot plans, going through what we have, and giving us the best recommendation of where we would put modular classrooms and what buildings. And that goes back to, I know David, Dr. Foltz is gonna talk about enrollment. Those are the things that we'll have to consider as far as enrollment. What buildings are gonna be affected? What boundaries are gonna be affected? Are we gonna have to redistrict to accommodate the needs of those particular buildings? And so, yeah, they, they do all that for us. And we've had those discussions, preliminary, you know, initial discussions about that. But it really comes down to when you start to look at the enrollment, where's the enrollment gonna be? What's gonna be the least distracted to our, our parents, and what's less impacted as far as where we put those modules? I just can't sit them down if we don't look at those projected enrollment numbers as well.
And as we move forward in this, I guess as a statement or a question for Dan, I mean, what, you know, I'm a firm believer of trust but verify, and obviously, we trust what we're gonna verify. But when we talk about these projects, is it safe for me to assume that you're not writing a check that we can't cash? So like, you're, you're, you're looking at the budget, you're looking at the numbers that you look at all day long, and you're saying, hey, guys, we can't do this. Come up with a different plan.
Not only can I write a check that we can't cash, we can't do a contract unless the money's available, unless they assume for me to pay it, and I'm not paying the extra, right?
Right, come on.
That's the consequence.
You know, and the things that you're bringing, the thing that you're bringing to us is that, hey, guys, I'm dipping more into the operation piece of it. I need you to be aware of this, because this is gonna affect this. But again, we, again, our job is, is to trust but to verify. I, I understand that piece, and so...
And to, and to approve. Like, you know, one of the, the important things is, when Mr. Lefada was describing the services, we don't, we're not, we can't wait till an emergency happens, or we can't wait and plan at the last minute. All that has to be done upfront, okay? That, aside from knowing those services that they do, they need to know our buildings, too. Okay? So you can't just put a modular unit anywhere. They need to know our buildings in advance when something happens. So I think that's, that's an important part of identifying, retaining somebody, not just to help us plan, but also to, to immediately respond if something happens.
Okay.
And they'll have all the footprints of our school, current schools.
And again, no project goes forward, okay, until it comes to the board first, to know what we're doing.
Gotcha. Thank you.
I just wanna go back and talk about HR for a minute, but, because it was brought to my attention that December of twenty twenty-three, when the union contracts were negotiated, they was negotiated for two years instead of three because of House Bill one eighty-seven. And I just want the community to know the reason this is on the agenda tonight is you weren't sure you were going to have the state funding in order to give the union...
On the personnel, the personnel section.
Right, on the personnel section of the, of the agenda. And so that's the reason we are approving it tonight, because they've already been told, the union has, that we are going to approve this tonight. So I just wanted the community to know about this, because there's been several questions to me about this. And I'm, I'm glad that you informed me of House Bill one eighty-seven. And I'm gonna look that up when I get home and, and check it out.
Yeah.
Because I'm, I'm concerned about our budget for twenty-five, our twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. We need to make sure we, we're going to have the funds to continue to pay our staff and our stu, our teachers.
And, and we'll, and we'll talk about that when later on we do the five-year forecast, right? The updated version of it. We'll, we'll talk about all that.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And what I wanna clarify, I, I don't even remember the details of the House bill anymore. It feels so long ago. But the, what, what is, the big picture is, he can't certify
Correct.
money. If that, that is not planned in, in the five-year forecast. And so he has to be able to certify it. So it, it wasn't necessarily just a, a House bill influenced that, but it's, that's true every time we do negotiations. He can only certify what he can certify. So that's why it, it can change from one year to two year to three year to five year. It's, it's, it's moving. It wasn't because of a House bill alone.
Correct.
Correct, yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
So that was, that was item seven-point-oh-two.
With a circle back, and then, yeah, so it's, so, so now, so are all SHP questions good? Are we ready to move on?
No, we're good now. I just needed some clarification as well.
Yep, thank you.
Got it. Okay, approval of minutes.
Okay, item seven-point-oh-three is the request for the approval of the minutes for the meeting that was held on May fifth, two thousand twenty-five. It's a regular business meeting. Item seven-point-zero-four is request and motion to approve the donations as presented. I can read those briefly. Bam Realty Group donated a new cooler to the Aspire Cafe at West Claremont High School. Withersville Tabasco PTO donated Magic Treehouse books to WT Elementary for the Right to Read Week. WT PTO donated Finding Winnie books, twenty-five of them, to WT Elementary. WT PTO donated Finding Winnie books, twenty-five of them, to WT Elementary to build classroom libraries. Barb Atting donated several book series to Clough Pike Elementary Library. Amelia Walmart donated snacks, pop chips, dry erase markers, other materials for the Amelia Elementary for staff appreciation. And Withersville Church of Christ donated seventy, ten dollars, everything bagels, gift cards to Withersville Elementary for teachers and staff, and really for the appreciation. Um, so it's recommended to approve those donations as listed. Item seven point zero five is request for approval of authorization for the superintendent, treasurer to negotiate and execute contracts as presented. There are three of them there. Pocket Talk HC, uh, Hamilton County Developmental Disabilities, that is for the twenty-five, twenty-six year coming up. And Hamilton County ESC, again, for the contract for the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year that is coming up. So again, the request for approval of those contracts. Item seven point zero six is request for approval of purpose and budget statements for this current year, twenty-four, twenty-five. So as, as the activities of the school activities, uh, um, change, request that those purpose and budget statements be approved. There's four of them listed there. Item seven point zero seven is request for approval of the financial statements, the bills paid list, and the investments for April two thousand twenty-five, um, as presented. So the consent agenda is item seven point zero one through seven point zero seven as listed and requested.
Thank you, Mr. Romano. You've heard the recommendation, would someone like to make a motion? Thank you, Mr. Rudy, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Chumley, is there any further discussion? We'll call.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Chumley?
Yes.
Ms. Sandborn?
Yes.
Mrs. Spencer?
Yes.
Mr. Patton?
Yes.
Five yes?
Okay, up next is the innovation course of study updates, um, Mrs. Preston? And friends, I think.
Yes, friends for sure. Good evening. Um, tonight, we wanted to take just a few minutes to provide the board with an update on our innovation course of study and kind of the work that, um, that our team has been engaged with. Tonight, to share this update with you, I wanna introduce to you two, um, highly valued members of our teaching and learning team. Um, Mrs. Elaine Giorgio, who's our Assistant Director of Teaching and Learning, and Sarah Kaufman, who serves the district as a curriculum and instructional technology specialist.
Good evening. There we go. Uh, I'm Elaine, and this is our course of study team this year. Barb Kenny, Bill McFarland, Leanne Pierce, Nicole Die, myself, and Sarah Kaufman. We have a variety of people that have math, science experience, and, um, four of which are on the discovery team right now, teaching students about STEM and STEAM learning. So we have a draft of our shared vision. I'm gonna take a moment to read this because it helps frame this work. STEAM STEM learning empowers students to open, purposeful exploration, design thinking, and innovation through an inclusive, asset-based approach. Problem-solving, creativity, and technology integration are fostered through standards aligned cross-curricular experiences that promote deeper learning so that all learners develop the knowledge, skills, and mindsets needed to thrive in an ever-evolving world.
All right, so where we started, we looked at a few frameworks, uh, including the Ohio STEM and STEAM designation rubric, the Ohio's Quality Model for STEM and STEAM Schools, and the Ohio's Personalized Learning Framework. And that picture is an example of everything that the Ohio's Personalized Learning Framework encompasses. And that's something, not only that we wanna see in these classes, but across the board in all of our, uh, classes and all grade levels. Uh, just to give you some reference for the STEM designation rubric, these are the three domains for learning. And again, these are things that we wanna see in every classroom. Um, so we're starting where it feels natural with the discovery team and teachers that are naturally inclined to teach innovation with, um, innovation in mind. What we've done so far through this process this year, um, we've so far, um, developed a draft vision, as you've heard, and that's gonna be ongoing, that's why we're calling it a draft, because we're constantly refining it to make sure we're meeting the needs for what our students need. Um, and currently, we have K-five units planned for next year. There, we're still, um, working on those a little bit, but they are vertically aligned and also horizontally aligned. And with those units, we've developed shared language. So we are gonna talk a little bit about design thinking, project-based learning, and then connections to Portrait of a Graduate.
So this goes into our shared learning. We started with the Ohio STEAM STEM designation rubric. The state outlines what they look for in innovative classrooms. We also participated in the showcase, um, as observers at Indian Hill Primary. They are one of the STEM-designated schools in the area. We also have been in contact in collaboration with the STEMnet Council at Hamilton County ESC. We've unpacked the new Ohio technology standards. They were just launched in the last two months and developed from the ISTI standards. We piloted use, uh, the use of rubrics that we created during our course of study, which has been super exciting. As the team has worked to create standards-aligned lessons and units, they really, uh, pinpoint a target, and they look at rubrics as like the vehicle to get you to that intended outcome. And you'll get to see some of those rubrics. Uh, we've done some co-teaching and co-reflecting using the rubrics and feedback and assessment. These are just pictures on the right of classrooms, but I can speak specifically to the bottom picture that's at Amelia with Mr. McFarland. He and I co-taught a lesson in a kindergarten class, and we really worked on the intended outcome of students, had dominoes to connect all the way down the table, and their rubric focus was communication and collaboration. And so in that particular case, we would walk around the room and provide feedback regarding like how they were working together and communicating with one another and regarding their structure. I wish you could see that closer up, but each student's structures are very different, but they connected all the way down. So, um, guidance for use in AI for K-12 classrooms. We actually used quite a bit of AI when we were looking at ways to create cross-curricular units that were meaningful, that helped promote important, critical areas of learning for students, and to help us categorize the units across the grade levels. When Sarah was talking about the units being developed horizontally and vertically, we wanted to make sure if you were a kindergartner and you're progressing through elementary school, the learning that you started with as a kindergartner was intentionally developed over time. And I, I do wanna recognize the, um, the positive influence of AI in our problem-solving and creation and design. And collaboration with the elementary science course of study, which happened on May sixth. Um, that was really exciting because we brought course of study teams in to look at the scope of the work that had been done so far. So, science course of study had an opportunity to hear the innovation course of study share their work, their, their learning and their experiences, their use of rubrics, and their use of the design thinking process, which we're gonna go into next, and I'm very excited about that as well. Um, it was really exciting because we knew, these are good research-based practices. They help promote deeper learning and thinking. And, um, one teacher that was retiring, um, she said, I wish I wasn't retiring, I wanna come back and see this happening. So I, I'm just so excited, and we are so grateful to be here in this moment. And to give you an update, because this is the beginning of really exciting work that I am sure is gonna spread across the elementaries and across the district. So we're gonna go on to the next one. That is a model of design thinking process. We didn't make it up, it's, it's a, it's a very common process. You ask a question, you imagine different like possibilities, you make a plan, you create something, you reflect on that creation, you reflect on it, and then you improve it, and then you launch it. And it's a continuous cycle of learning. And this is the process that our discovery teachers use in their classrooms. And, you know, we said to each other, this is the process we use in learning. It really defines the, the learning process. So science teachers are also using this, so what a great way to push this work out through this design thinking process. This is a draft right now, but again, the team really lived this innovation process. Innovation is about trying something out and learning from something that went well, something that could be a next step, so.
Well, and design thinking is industry, it's not just a school term.
Absolutely.
Something that happens here, it's, it's industry. Many different groups use that, yep.
Um, these are our rubrics, I'll speak to them.
Sure. So we, uh, as you see, all of these, these three rubrics look very similar, and I'll go into our units next. But, uh, the unit one for all grade levels, K through five, they came up with is innovative designer. And these are just some of the skills that were identified that are important for those courses and within that unit that they wanna see, and they're skills that are important not just in these classes, but for every class in elementary school and even secondary, to be honest. And as you go up from unit, from kindergarten to second grade, a lot of the skills, the root of those skills stays the same, but there are some slight modifications just to level up for that grade level. So it's really scaffolded support that those teachers are able to provide. And, uh, we did have some teachers pilot using this, and they said this was a very student-friendly version to use these types of rubrics because with the discovery team right now, those teachers have how many students?
Yeah, sometimes thirty.
Um, thirty at a time, and they see maybe all of the students within the elementary building in their entire week. So just thinking about how to assess students in a teacher-friendly and student-friendly way, this was something that they came up with, and they were on board with using it, so it was a win for us.
I would add that students can use this to guide their own learning, so it really promotes like collaborative reflection, co-reflection. Um, and it just helps us to promote next steps in learning and be clear on it. And this is another example of that intentionality, like Sarah had mentioned. These rubrics are intentionally built on one another to scaffold up.
So, uh, we did establish, uh, unit themes for, uh, each unit. So we have four units that take up the whole year, and that's the plan right now. We're gonna pilot this next year and see how it goes, and of course, meet and refine as we go and as needed. So, um, first quarter will be about unit one, that's innovative designer. There are some of the key concepts for that. Design and build is focusing on engineering, prototyping. And the third quarter, third unit, would be technology and digital tools. And then the fourth quarter is almost a culminating experience where they get to apply all of the skills learned from those first three units and try to solve a problem within their community or within their school, and really apply the design thinking process. And then, um, I can speak to this?
Yeah.
Uh, we have also a lot of, we did a lot of work with standards alignment. We align, well, as we said, it's, we tried to make intentional cross-curricular connections. So we looked at the new Ohio's Learning Standards for Technology. A lot of this work is rooted in that. We also have connections to Ohio's Science Learning Standards, ELA Standards for the Listening and Speaking, Math Standards, and Computer Science Standards. So there's a lot of work that went into this, and, but when we looked at the standards, there were a lot of connections that we thought made sense, and we're really excited to see how it comes together next year.
Can I ask a question real quick?
Yes.
So you've hit these standards. Does Discovery not have standards of their own, or you just incorporate? Is this all incorporating into all of the classes and everything that they do?
Yeah, Discovery doesn't have standards of its own. And so they were, uh, creating experiences and lessons that promoted deeper learning, problem-solving, collaboration. And we saw this as a perfect opportunity to promote cross-curricular connections and to really, um, help students, you know, take what they've learned in Discovery and bridge it over into other classrooms and vice versa, so that that learning is enduring learning, yeah.
Another thi- some feedback that we got from students, uh, this is high school students as well as middle school students, saying that, you know, when they get to high school and make choices on their courses, whether it be the cyber security, or if it's STEM-related, design engineering, the, um, aviation course, they were saying, you've gotta take this down to the other, like, they need to know like what's possible. I had no idea aviation would be even a thing. And so their advice always to us is push this down further so that kids are exposed to these topics earlier and then can make better choices and plan their own paths. And so that, this is all that coming together. I just wanna commend you guys, um, your leadership team. And this is really incredible work, something that really didn't exist in West Claremont. Throughout Claremont County, we really have a, um, not a strong STEM or STEAM presence. And this is really the start of something special. I know when we started Discovery, it was to connect to outside careers and partners, and I see lots of connections here for that. Um, just to give a tangible example, what this will end up being are things like Legos in kindergarten, first grade that turns into 3D printing when you're in the upper grades where you're creating things, and then it's gonna be industry equipment by the time you're in high school. And so that, that's really what we're after, is that it's the thinking process. And as we see more and more advanced technology and AI and how it impacts our world, human-centered design, so that we are designing for the end user and, and we come at it with a human approach, is gonna be more important than ever. So these skills are gonna continue, and you can see this, if you're looking at any job search, which jobs are the most wanted and, you know, in the world right now? It's things that are related to these skills. So you guys did an excellent job, thank you so much. Any other questions?
That's the last?
Yeah.
Thank you guys.
I appreciate that.
So much.
And I guess the vision would be to get that STEM designation someday? Yeah, so.
And telling itself is really underrepresented, so.
Yeah, so that's, that's great. Another trailblazing activity. Thanks. All right, so up next, we have the enrollment port report, but it, that also doesn't tell the whole story. This is really staffing and enrollment, so, uh, David and Josh, the David and Josh Show. This is a report that David has traditionally brought to us. He gives us a version every November and then updates it every May. So that, this is what this is, to help us plan and project what's happening.
Thank you, yes, November really, when we get the new prediction numbers and then we look at the May, uh, those, remind everyone of those prediction numbers and then start to look at staffing needs. So the first slide is just, um, s- some, some research on continued shortages, attrition and lack of qualified teachers. So I was, I was looking through some articles, and it, it hit me because, uh, from a national scale, when we're talking about seventy-four percent of public schools reported difficulty hiring full, fully-certified teachers. And that's one in eight nationally, so think about almost a half. It'll pop back up here in a second. Go check your email, Mr. Romano. Uh, one in eight teachers, which is almost half a million teachers nationwide, are, uh, positions are left unfilled or filled by individuals not fully qualified for those positions. But, uh, so, okay, that's national, let's look at a state. Ohio shortage news. So they, I was able to drill it down to southwest Ohio that the attrition rate is about fourteen point five percent. And so remember that number, cuz we're gonna talk about our attrition rate compared to that. And then finally, um, the Ohio educated workforce is a steady decline even since the pandemic and it's special ed, ELL, math, science, and social studies. So there's some of those core classes and special ed classes. Josh is gonna talk about what we've been doing to try to recruit people to make sure that our numbers and statutes and shortages do not reflect what we see nationally and statewide.
So, uh, Dr. Foltz, we, obviously, we have a shortage, uh, we know it's out there. Dr. Foltz sent me on a roadshow, um, around our state and Kentucky. Um, I might be the first person to have a bitmoji on a board report, but here I am. So he sent me to all these, uh, career fairs around the state, and we were strategic with what we did. Um, we used Title II data, which is, um, which tells how many college graduates they previously had in education. Um, we hit five of the seven in the state of Ohio. Um, University of Kentucky is also one of the top three in Kentucky. Um, and so we made the trip around. Our goal and our strategy behind it was one city away. Our thought process was, we can recruit someone two hours away, it's not that far if you're from that original city. Um, we can either recruit you back to, record, recruit you to Cincinnati or recruit you back to Cincinnati for those that went away to colleges in those different places. And so, um, that was, those were our efforts to try to get out there and put our name out there. And that, that becomes super important, not just today, but in the future. So our stats from, uh, those career fairs, uh, we had one hundred and twenty-one candidate engagements. That means we had some sort of conversation one-on-one with a candidate at these career fairs. Um, we conducted fifty-two interviews. Um, those are like first, first-round survey-type interviews, just to get to know the candidates. Um, we had forty-four of them sign up for an email chain that I'm sending. We had forty-four of them sign up for an email chain that I'm sending out every time we have a posting. So we're putting those, we're putting those job postings in these candidates' inbox. They, they conveyed to me that they liked what they heard about West Claremont and so we want to be front and center whenever we have those postings go out. And we've had two offers from them, two offers strictly from career fairs, and one of them has accepted. And so, and while that one might be one, it's, it's a big victory. It's, it's one of our special education teachers that is joining us from Miami University, didn't know anything about us in West Claremont, but we sold them on the great things happening here. In our picture there, we have Greg Potabom. He helped me out. This is us at Xavier University. If you take a look in the background, it doesn't look like much is going on. That's because it's the end of the day. We stayed there from the very beginning to the very end. We were interviewing people. We may not have had the position open right now, but we want to be prepared when it comes open and we've talked to those people. It's also a time for us to sell our district to our people. Even if they don't, even if we don't hire them tomorrow, hopefully the next year, they say, oh yeah, West Claremont's got an opening, I want to go work there. So it's a long-term effect of how we get people to come and work for us in West Claremont. Other ways that we are able to get them to work for us is our teaching candidates, those from the university. We hosted thirty-nine student observers. Those would be the ones that come for maybe one to two hours. They have small sections of time throughout the course of the week. They're typically the younger, the younger people within the college, freshmen, sophomores. And then student teachers, that's where they come for a semester and they really get that teaching experience. We hosted fifty-one of those. Student teachers hired into West Claremont to date is four, which is an awesome, it's an awesome return. In our picture here, we have Holly Hill, some student teachers with their cooperating teachers. And I tell you a story from one of those career fairs. Holly Hill, one of the candidates there, they had such a great experience doing their student teaching at Holly Hill that they, they were talking to their roommates, they were talking to their classmates about all, how great West Claremont was, and I had people come up to my booth, to our booth at West Claremont, at Xavier and say, hey, my roommate talked about all the great things that happened there. What's going on there? You know, what openings do you have? And so it's not going to be just the people that are in our buildings, but also what they say about us. So some good momentum there. We're working to expand our connections with colleges. It has to be win-win. It can't be just us taking in candidates from the outside and, and doing things. We also want to make sure that we're giving back to them. We're bringing those candidates in, but they're also providing things for us and us for them. We went and did mock interviews at Xavier University, also Mount St. Joe's. Dr. Foltz went to the University of Cincinnati to talk to their sophomores about like the do's and don'ts of student teaching. We have engagements where we're connecting, our principals are connecting, Mr. Potabom and Aaron Parker went to NKU, and we're partnering with Xavier University for, they're giving us professional development free to our staff in exchange for us taking in student teachers. We also have, we've invited all these groups to our take care of their selfie day so that they could promote themselves as well. So looking to expand those connections, we want to make sure that when they have those best candidates coming out, they send them to West Claremont so we can hire.
So what you're seeing is that more traditional ways in which we're going to find people, but as we continue to, to have retirement, we'll talk about this and attrition, we need to really get kind of unique on how we find people or different, think of different alternative ways to help support our staff. So let's talk about staff retention, keeping and finding. That was our, that was the class of twenty twenty-five coming in, so we were excited about that. I've been keeping track over the last four years about our attrition rate. This does not include retirement. And so the blue is twenty-one, twenty-two, red is twenty-two, twenty-three, green is twenty-three, twenty-four, and purple is twenty-four, twenty-five. So what you'll see is the highest percent we have so far this year is thirty-two percent and that's family and personal needs. So they're, they're leaving us to take care of a relative, take care of a loved one, stay home, like stay-home spouse. Behind, the next two is the leaving the profession completely at twenty-four percent or not a good fit for them or us at twenty-four percent. So you're seeing, that kind of speaks to that shortage again. People are leaving the profession. And then finally, our lowest is twenty percent on better salary. If you look to, this is all based on as of Friday, May sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. If you look at our turnover rate, thirteen, one percent in twenty-one, twenty-two, we've got that down to four point seven. Now, last year at this time, that nine point nine was six point nine. So we are doing better than the average in southwest Ohio in terms of attrition. We're having less of it. I think that speaks a lot to the programs we have, the culture that we're building, the engagement that we've been getting into. Keeping that in mind and speaking to what Josh talked about, we still have holes to fill. So retirements are trending upward. I, I will say, if, we're going to start with the blue line on the bottom. So on April seventeenth, ODE or their new version of that, reduced retirement eligibility from thirty-five years of service to thirty-two years of service. I think we had three, three, announced their retirement after that change. So you're seeing a, a steep incline. The percentages on the, on the right were twelve point eight percent in the next five, twenty-seven point one in the next ten. We asked that from survey questions we gave teachers. That was prior to the retirement eligibility going from thirty-five years to thirty-two. So we're expecting those percentages to go up when we ask that question again. Currently, as of Friday, we had eleven openings at the elementary. We still have six, five filled and six still to fill. The middle school, we had fifteen, that's nine filled and six still to fill. At the high school, we had eight, that's seven filled and one still to fill. So Josh, you can talk about our culture and engagement and, and I think a part of why our attrition rate is so low compared to the southwest average.
So we administered our Gallup survey. This is nationally normed survey looking at culture and climate. We've, we've done this over the past couple of years and want to share out some of those pieces that, that survey shared with us. You can see November of twenty twenty-four to March of twenty twenty-five, we had a good percentage participate, roughly around ninety percent both times. If you look at, there's three categories, engaged, not engaged, and actively disengaged. The one thing I don't like about Gallup is kind of that not engaged category. And why I say that is, and I had somebody from Hamilton County in a PD, they said, look, the green engaged, those employees are doing a day plus of work. So they're going, going beyond a day's worth of work. The yellow, not engaged, they said they're getting a full day's worth of work. They're not bad employees, they're coming in, they're doing their work, they're taking care of business. Could they do more? They could, but they're getting a full day's in. And then are actively disengaged, we want to get, bring them up. We need, we need to get more out of them. And so I like that a little bit better because it, it tells a little bit better story in terms of what is actually happening here. We see the numbers jump up from forty-four to forty-eight percent kind of from November to March. That's typical for us. Over the past couple of years, we've seen them go from in the fall to the spring, go higher. Some of that is, can be attributed to our principals and the work that they do to actively try to push that engagement. The other thing that might be a factor in that is part of our onboarding and kind of bringing people into the fold. If you, some of the questions on there are like, my supervisor or someone who cares about me. If I'm a new employee, by February or March, I probably feel that and I can, I can answer that a little bit better if I've been enculturated into the culture in our buildings. So just some of the big surface level highlights from that. These were, these were our highlights as well. These were our two highest. Development is that, that someone cares about my development and they want me to get better. I would say that this is a testament to our T and L, our Teaching and Learning Department in terms of all that PD they put on, you know, for our teachers to try to make them feel, make them better teachers. We also have for our paraprofessionals, we also have, you know, for our secretaries, we're trying to make, make all of our employees better. I have a best friend at work is another one. While, while that might seem like, oh man, that's one of the work things, you know, you heard the paraprofessional over there tonight talk about her team. And I would guess that she would probably say like, man, I've got a best friend in one of those teammates and they pick each other up and they, they dust each other off when they have that rough day and they're there to celebrate with them. And those are the things that make it great to come to work. Those are the things that make it great to come to work in West Claremont. So two things to be proud of. We're continuing to grow our staff in the ways of portrait of an educator and portrait of a leader. New Teacher Academy, we had seventy-seven new teachers attend this. It's part of that new teacher orientation to start the year, but then continual monthly conversations with their principals. Great way to communicate with your principal in a non-threatening way, in a kind of, hey, how are things going to start that conversation? We also had a new Leader Academy. We had seven administrators go through that. It was led by Christy Otten. She did a nice job of talking about leadership and different theories of leadership. I can say that because I was there with them. We had three assistant principals, we had a dean, who's technically a teacher, but kind of taking on some of those leadership roles. Two special educators, special education supervisors, and one director. New for this year was also a, that our classified staff had the ability to take a micro-credential. It's like a, it's like a course that they take. This course was on reframing behavior, which focused on the neuroscience behind behavior and supportive strategies. So we offered it and if you took this course, you obviously gained knowledge that was going to be able to be applied within the classrooms that they work. This is for, offered to all of our classified staff. We had fifty-seven classmate, fifty-seven classified members take us up on that offer. They did work in person, but they also had to do work outside through modules, online modules, which they could do at their own pace. So great success in terms of development for our whole staff. We had portrait and action celebrations. Basically, our principals, they nominated people who were doing the great things found within RISE. We had a hundred and thirty-seven nominations. They're published once a week or, once a week, we send out our staff newsletter and that's where people are recognized by their principals for all those different characteristics that Sarah thrives. We had seventeen individuals for our administrators that were published within our district leadership team cabinet update, and so we're trying to take a look at those things that they're doing and make sure they know that they're doing great work.
Thank you. Back and focusing on enrollment. You've seen the numbers I'm about to show you, we've been talking about them, but I want to go over them again. Start with our kindergarten enrollment. So recognizing gaps. If you look at what was predicted to happen versus what actually showed up, if you look at the percent difference, we were almost a hundred percent plus on until the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. That is when we changed our policy to move age five from September thirtieth to August first, and so we, we saw that dip in six sixty-nine to six sixty-nine predicted and five fifty showed up. We anticipated about a fifteen percent dip, so that's, that's close to what we participate, we anticipated. You'll see the number projected, predicted for next year for kindergarten at six eighty-five. They're taking into account those kindergartners who didn't start coming back now. So it's a bigger number, but we're, we're excited about seeing that happen. If you look at the top right, as of May sixteenth, we have four hundred and thirty-two enrolled at sixty-three point one percent of our prediction, and last year at this time, we were at sixty-one point one percent. So we're a little ahead of where we were last year in terms of enrollment, which is positive. Now, I say that to look at the blue on the bottom left, House Bill one-one-four is still in process. It requires schools to admit to kindergarten any child who will be five years old by the first day of school. So it's only passed the House Education Committee, but we're keeping an eye on that because that will change that August first date to when they're five and when we start the school year. So that will also fluctuate with some of the numbers. You're going to start seeing the, the signs on the blue pop up in yards. They got the kindergarten enrollment signs out there. We've pushed it out on district website, Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, principal information, home to parents, school at China billboards and yard signs. So we're excited about getting that out there. Looking back again at our trajectory, our trend data over the next five to ten years, you've seen this model before where it trends upward and this is driven by residential development. We'll talk about that in a second, but the big picture here is by thirty, thirty-one, we're anticipating thirteen hundred and fifty-one kids. And we're seeing our major, the majority of our growth is coming from increased residential dwellings. So the, there's a larger increase in that first five years and then a steady trend after. So where are they coming from? So we get this update in Nov, in October and I bring it to you in November. If we look at October of twenty twenty-three, every red polygon is either construction happening or plans for construction happening that have been approved by the township. And if you compare the one on the right for last October and the one on the left, the October before, you're going to see larger and more red polygons. So that's where they're building. And if you look, it's, it's sporadic depending on where you're at, so that would then cause how the enrollment increases per each elementary attendant zone. So let's talk about that a little bit. So this is the forecast until school year thirty, thirty-one. And when you look at the bottom on, it says different, the bottom row. So next year, we're anticipating to have an additional two hundred and eighty kids for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, and then an additional two hundred and ninety-one for the twenty-six, twenty-seven, and then an additional three hundred and fifty-five for twenty-seven, twenty-eight. So we're seeing those coming pretty quick. Schools grow at a different pace and that continued growth is going to happen in the next five years and this is, being out of space is a, is a physical reality if those numbers actually turned out and show up.
Well, we're out of space now.
Right, right.
We're really out of space.
We're really out of space when that happens. So just an easier snapshot, let's look at, let's look at Amelia. From this year to next year, they go from six seventy-two to seven oh eight, that's thirty-six kids for next year. But if you go across, by the time twenty thirty, thirty-one comes around, that's two hundred and seven additional elementary kids. Two hundred and seven. And we, in that space. We know that Amelia has two hundred and seven, Clough has two hundred and sixteen, and WT is estimated at two hundred and thirteen. Those are our three largest enrollment growth pockets. Merwin and Summerside grow, but not, nowhere close to where they go. So we talk about modulars, we talk about redistricting, we're going to have to make some decisions as we continue to go down this path and our predictive numbers start to turn into reality numbers, we're really going to have to make some decisions on space.
Dr. Foltz, can I pause you for a minute, please? Can you, can you actually go back to, I believe it's twenty-two? So a couple of things. Yep. So a couple of questions that I, that I hear and that I, that I have is, and just to clarify, we as a school board, what, what say do we have when it comes to building these homes? Is that, is that a say? Do we have an opinion? Do we get to voice any concern as a board to where these builders are building?
No, no.
So when it comes to this and it comes to townships, do we have a say as a board of, of allowing six hundred homes to go in on a? So when we don't have a say, we just, we have to.
We have to respond.
We have to respond.
To deal with what they're doing.
Yes. In fact, this, I've been in this role, I believe, eight years and this was the first year a builder actually came and talked to our superintendent. That was the first time they proactively came to us. Typically, we're finding this out after the fact, after everything's been approved.
So that's my, my, my next question to that is, we've clarified that we as a board, we don't have a say in any, any of that piece of it. We have to educate the children that are there. How do, how do you get this information? So like the numbers out there, depending on where you go, I mean, I could sit here and Google something and, and like, there may not be a shovel on the ground, I guess, is what I'm saying. So how do we, how do we get these numbers?
So every year, the, just, performance, I call it decision inside, but it's no longer decision inside. Predictive enrollment analytics, that's it, through Power School.
Same company, but different name.
They contact local townships, they, they pull contracts, they pull building permits, and so they, they pull what type, is it a multi-unit dwelling? Is it a, is it a duplex? Is it a single house? So they pull all that information. Then they, they look at birth rates, they look at, you know, the type of families that move in, they use their own proprietary software that says, okay, if you have these many houses, it should translate to these many students.
Because even senior citizens home and developments bring kids according to the formula.
Yes. So it's all built on finding factual data with the township's actual planning, zoning department, getting that, put it into their proprietary, their proprietary data machine, and then they look at how that fills out in terms of where we're at and how we're doing. So it's all based on scientific research.
Okay. Yeah, I just thank you for that clarification because I, I think sometimes that's a misconception that we as the board, we, we don't have much of a say. And so sometimes, you know, and, and even putting requirements, I guess, for lack of better words, like we don't have a say to go to these builders and say, we require you to do this for our schools. Is that, is that a fair statement? Is that?
That's accurate, definitely accurate. And then when we, the last time that we redistricted our intended zones for elementary, there was very little to none on the east side of our school district. It was all north and so we, we redistricted because of the big rumpkey, if you remember, about eight years ago, they plotted that. That never happened, but look at all the red that's happened to the, on the east side of our district. So the last time we adjusted our attendance boundaries, we, we didn't adjust it for the picture that we're seeing today.
And is it safe to say that, that this is something that you're constantly monitoring?
Yes.
Like you're constantly getting this data?
Yes.
You know, Josh has taken some road trips to different colleges.
Yes.
Are we, are we going out into the?[1722.11]
Mr. Lefata has driven the district looking to see where these housing complexes are.
So someone of Natasha's team is, is going out into the community and actually physically seeing what's being built to get a, to even help you with these numbers.
Yes. In fact, I can drill down to the name of the, of the each polygon and what it's called and what attended zone it is. And I was, we were working on that last week of flagging those and then getting our, our summer drive to go make sure how much of it is built? Is any of it built? Is there halfway built? Now, we get all that information from performance enrollment analytics, but we like to, like you said, trust but verify. We like to verify. We go out and go, okay, they're saying we're going to get these many kids from these many dwellings. Is it really happening? So that's what we do that periodically.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for jumping back. I apologize.
Yeah, no worries.
Jump back on to.
Not a problem. So ultimately, and I, I throw this up there and I think you're going to see this again, but just keeping in mind the realities of enrollment increasing, of space issues and continued staffing shortages. The reality is we need to start, we need to continue to look at potential short-term mitigations and long-term solutions. Some of those could be moving back to half-day kindergarten, increasing class size, elementary specials on a car, targeted attendance boundary changes, staggering master schedules, repurposing facilities and leased space and modular classrooms. And Randy reminded me that the amount here was November of last year and that amount has increased.
Yeah, and that's just for one of the units.
That's just for one.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, one unit, two classes.
What is staggering master schedules? What is that? Is that like for, just explain that to me.
It could be that half the school comes at one time and another cap comes at another time. So you stagger.
Start early and start later.
Just to have enough space for everybody. It's a methodology that was used back in the seventies.
I was going to say, I think I did that.
Yeah, you might have.
Yeah, half a year, well, half a day for fifth grade or something's created.
Yes, it's that kind of.
Yes. We're, we're trying to get creative on, on different opportunities.
We were looking at like every option that we could explore.
Definitely. Okay, do you have any questions? Any more questions?
Well, it looks like we've got our work cut out for us in kindergarten enrollment, to look at everything, to trust but verify and to make sure we have enough chairs and seats for all these students that are come to our district.
Well, when they show up, the last thing you want to see of a new child, whether they be kindergarten or twelfth grade, is we don't have space for you standing, standing in the corner or sat on the floor. And that, their first day could ruin their, their total feeling about who we are. So we, we, we have to always over-prepare and be prepared for. So when they walk in, they're, walk in welcomed with this great staff that we have.
Do you know offhand the percentage of people leaving the profession in the state and nationally?
I can get that for you. I looked, I looked specifically at Ohio because I wanted to see in Southwest to try to find comparable data for us around, but we can get some of that information. I would say for everything that I've read, the state's higher, I mean, sorry, the nation's higher than Ohio, but not by that much. But I, I don't want to misquote, so I'll get some information.
I received it all the time.
I know, I know. And trying to attract people to this profession is a struggle. And so then how do you, we, we've done a great job of retaining, and even though we lose, everyone loses, but we've done a really good job over the last couple of years of retaining our staff. But at the same time, you decrease how many years to retirement? It, it adds, it adds a hole. Like we, we lost three within the first week, once that news came out. And I know that's going to have a, that's going to have effect on us next year. And then how do we, how do we get creative about filling our classrooms and making sure that we have support staff that can help our kids?
And growing our own.
Yes, definitely.
The concern with, oh gosh, a lot of these fields are having hard times finding, I know in my line of work, we're, we're literally, they're robbing Peter to pay Paul. I mean, we're all, we're all jockeying with different departments to see who we can get. And, you know, and education's the same way. You know, we're hiring for something, the neighboring school districts hiring for someone, the other neighboring school districts. And so then it, it's what, what is attracting them to us versus, you know, someone else? And so, you know, the team taking these journeys and trying to. Yeah, attract these, these young.
Well, if I, if I can show another slide, because I think people, a lot of times they go back to, well, if you paid us more, if you paid us more, if you paid us more. We're, we're never going to be the highest paid and we don't, we don't need to be the lowest paid. So we're typically right in the middle, the mean for where we're at. But if you look at better salary position, that's only twenty percent of why people are leaving. So we, we build like Josh was talking about and what the Gallup has shown us, we build a culture where people want to be there. You saw these ladies, the paraproses, they want to be here. Could they go to the places and make more money? Probably. But they, they love their kids, they love what they do, they care for each other. So we continuously look at how do we build that culture? Because money isn't everything. We've had people leave for money and then call us and say, can I come back? Classified and certified. So they get out there like, oh, this is not, I, I went for the paycheck and lost the culture, lost the feeling of friendship, lost that person at work. And how, how quickly can we get back to you? And that says a lot for what we do because it, yes, a paycheck is nice and we, and we, everyone needs to be paid. But at the same time, you want to love coming to work. You want to love the people you work with. If the work's hard, all four, those three, five will tell you the work is hard at times. But they do it every day because it's important to them, it's, they're passionate about it and it means something.
Did you guys do the visiting last year too, to all those colleges? Or was this the first year you ever kind of actively went out and kind of tried to?
We, we went to a couple, but this, this year we're really branched out, moving further away. Some of them were great, some of them weren't so great. So we thought, okay, how can we shift that for next year and where can we go next year? So it's, it's, it's trial and error, it's seeing where they're graduating. We typically stayed within the belt of, since you see Xavier, Mount St. Joe. But we branched out and we're going to branch out somewhere next year.
Yeah, part of expanding HR was to be able to open up more opportunities because David alone doing this, it would be very, very slim. And being able to look beyond different states, being able to look further beyond, you know, in larger areas in our state has all been part of our strategic plan in your department.
Well, and we take advantage of partnerships. So like Josh was saying, it isn't about just what they can give us. We go in and say, what do you need from us? And I've, I've worked with UC for, I think this is our fourth year for sophomores and try to talk to them about how to be professional in their student teaching. And I do an hour every spring with them before, and I do, and inevitably, there's one or two people in there that are, that are getting student teaching West Claremont or went to West Claremont. And so I'm like, talk, tell them about us, you know, let's, let's keep it going, just to try to make that connection so they hear West Claremont and they hear, that sounds like a cool place to work, that sounds fun, that sounds exciting. So we're, we're spending our time, our time and energy to do the mocks and to do their talks and to do their visits because of, we're trying to tell the, the incoming new teachers, we care about you, we want you to be here. And then how can we, how can we get you out to our school and take a walk? You know, and Greg Potabam has done that a couple of times, Jake has done that a couple of times. Getting them out, having them walk the building and say, don't you want to be here? And so when that position comes up, they're applying for it.
That's how I came to the district, at Miami University. And that was in nineteen eighty-three. Nineteen eighty-three.
We're bringing out everyone's age tonight.
Josh wasn't born yet.
We want to say like, thank you Reverend Foltz. That's what tonight's presentation felt like. Thank you very much.
Appreciate that information.
Next up, we have a recommendation to approve the authorization and confirmation of the settlement agreement of the West Claremont Local School District Board of Education and Richard Weber on behalf of Mia Weber as presented.
Thank you. You've heard the recommendation. Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll move.
Thank you, Mr. Rudy. Is there a second?
Second.
Was that you, Ms. Samborn?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Samborn. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Ms. Samborn?
Yes.
Mrs. Spencer?
Yes.
Mr. Patton?
Yes.
Mr. Chumley?
Yes.
Five yes?
Up next, we have some combined business, Superintendent Treasure, and we're going to have Mr. Gettler come up and talk about the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission Resolution.
So the journey through the OFCC, it started way back, if you can remember, we started talking about this, I think it was probably in twenty-three, going into twenty-four. And as we went into twenty-four, that's when we started talking about the master facility plan. That's when we started to get SHP involved in it. They started that process and we started those meetings with the CAT team. I believe it was February was our first one of twenty-four. And so when we started into the OFCC, it's been a learning experience for all of us. We've gone back and forth with OFCC, trying to understand their process. And it does get confusing. The first thing that we came into was the enrollment. And we figured out that OFCC math is a little bit different than our math because they don't include all our students. Some of our students, like our CTE or Career Tech students in eleventh and twelfth grade, they don't include, they're excluded. So they're not in those enrollment numbers. Our preschool, our students that are not identified are not involved in those numbers. And so those numbers come down. And so when we first started going FCC, they were giving us projected enrollment and we use a moderate and they use conservative. And so their projected enrollment for us in twenty-thirty was what we currently have in our buildings now. And I went back and forth with OFCC and say, well, what are you talking about? This is not, this is our math, this is what we do, we do it by the square footage and this is how we do it. And this is what we're going to fund. And so when we start looking at the numbers, as far as percentage that we would get from the state, it goes by what we call OFCC math. We're going to take the money, as much money as that we can get from them. And so as we went through the OFCC and we went through this, we went through a lot of different assessments, facility assessments. You remember, I kept talking about, okay, I went back and they sent me a facility assessment. It wasn't even the right grade level, it wasn't even the right grade span, it was in a different building. Those are the things that come back. Well, what they do is they maximize the number of students. And so in the letter that we'll send, you're going to see something that's going to say something like PK five. Well, we don't have that building or four eight, we don't have that building. But on paper for them, they try to maximize the number of square footers, the maximum amount of square footage to get us the most dollars. And so that's why you're going to see a little bit of a different grade span. Doesn't mean we have to build that school in that particular grade, level, grade span, but this is how we're going to maximize the number for you. So when they look at those assessments, it goes back to two thousand and sixteen and then it's also for two thousand and twenty-four. And we kept adjusting and as the CAT team went through this, because the CAT team kept, you know, as we went through and we made modifications on what we wanted to do as far as our master facility plan, we continually looked at that. And so what's in front of you tonight is to participate. And you think, well, we've been talking about this for two years or over a year and a half. Well, we, we get our letter in May, it just came in last May, as far as funding goes. And what the.
Last week, you mean?
Huh?
Last week?
Last week.
You said last May, last week.
Oh, last week. So yes, it just came in, the official. So you're like, why didn't this happen a year and a half ago? Well, we, we don't dictate that. They put us in line, then they give us the funding and they tell us how much they're going to fund of the total project that we put in our master facility plan. And as we kept going back and forth and back and forth, and we wanted to build buildings that were going to be able to house our moderate enrollment projections. And so we couldn't build buildings at our current capacity because we wouldn't have enough space. So what this is tonight is, once we receive that letter, then in July, they will go in to the commission and it will be approved. We received the letter, Dan and Natasha received the letter saying that this, you're going to be funded for the total project amount that they had put through their master facility plan, which came out to be about twenty percent. So that's what we're doing. So as we went through the OFCC, we said, once we go to the ballot, you have sixteen months to secure funding for a building project. So with the, with the ballot results or what happened in May, week ago, a couple of weeks ago, we know that that's not going to happen. We're not going to be building buildings on that particular issue. So I called OFCC and I asked them, I said, so with the master facility plan, if we do this and we put this in and say, yes, we want this funding, it keeps us in line, it keeps us in line with getting funding if you were to go down the road and wanted to go through another building project. Does it make it mandatory that we go to the ballot? No. Those are decisions that you guys will have to make as we go through the next twelve to sixteen months. But what this does by signing this as saying, yes, we still want to be considered for funding, it does not make it necessary that you have to do this. You don't want to get out of line because if we were saying, no, we don't want this, then we come out of line. And that would contact, we would contact OFCC and say, we don't want the money. I don't think that's the best case scenario for us, regardless if we go to the ballot or not. And that's going to be hard decisions to make as you go down the road. You saw the projected enrollment. Twenty-seven, twenty-eight is going to be tough. Those are the things that we're going to have to look at as far as adding modulators, which means we got to look at those in twenty-six, in the fall of twenty-six as a board to purchase those so we're ready for that in twenty-seven, twenty-eight. So all this does is it does not commit you to go to the ballot, it does not commit you to go to the taxpayers. What this does is say, we want to stay in line, we don't want to lose our place in line, we want to be, if we were to go for funding down the road within the sixteen months, and who knows, that could even extend. We, they do change things and we can do things. But what you can do is you can stay in line, you can amend the total project, the total scope of work, that it could be less than what we did the first time. But remember, the cost will go up. So what you go through a year from now will not be the same. You're going to have five to six percent increase. And so you're going to say, well, you said we could build, no. It's going to go up, but you can decrease the scope of work to one building and what you would feel is necessary to be able to meet the enrollment needs of the district. So just to reiterate, this doesn't mean we're going to the ballot. This means we're just going to stay in line in case we wanted to down the road.
So in other words, and I've had a couple of people ask me this, if we didn't approve this tonight, we would go to the end of the line with OFCC and then there's no guarantee when our number would come back up to get the funding we needed to build a building?
That is correct.
So again, just to kind of piggyback.
One, we don't know what end of, end of the line is.
We don't know where the end of the line is.
Well, I, I don't either. I thought it said end of the line.
We wouldn't be positioned where we are today.
Correct.
Yes.
Again, if I'm hearing you, no harm, no foul.
No harm, just keeping the coupons.
So we keep, we keep our place in line.
Yes.
Then as time goes on, as we as a board decide what we're going to do, no ballot, whatever we do, but that's all this is.
Yes.
Yeah, and if we learn through this process that an amended plan would be more attractive to people and they think it's important, then that, that flexibility is built in.
But the amended plan, to not spend too much time, is back, way back in the day when we could have built three or four buildings, but then we ended up only building one building for the same cost that we could have built three buildings.
Yeah, well, like what, what he was saying is that it, the cost is going to keep going up. So even an amended plan is going to be more expensive in the future than it is today. And we kind of missed that window of that, that price point.
If you remember, last year, we had a certain total cost came out and then two months later, it went up five percent. Well, the new set, the costs are coming out this summer, which are going to be even more in increase.
So are you wanting to get that cost in so you can keep track of that?
Am I going to get it?
No, I mean, you're going to keep track of the data of the cost?
Oh, yeah, definitely, yes. We're going to have to because it's going to change the scope of what we can do.
So a rec, is there any more questions?
Okay, thank you.
So the recommendation is to approve the resolution authorizing the school district board to participate in the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission Classroom Facilities Assistance Program, segment two, final as presented.
Thank you. You've heard the recommendation. Would someone like to make a motion? Thank you. You've heard the recommendation. Would someone like to make a motion? Thank you, Mr. Rudy. Is there a second?
A second.
Was it you, Ms. Spencer? Thank you, Ms. Spencer. Is there any other discussion? Will Paul please?
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Spencer?
Yes.
Mr. Patton?
Yes.
Mr. Chumley?
Yes.
Ms. Sambley?
Yes.
Five yes?
I'm going to hit advocacy at a very high level. Just a reminder that we have been very committed. You have been committed as a board in advocacy. Dan and I went up this week both to our, participated in our, our associations legislative meetings this week. And then we also attended hearings at the state house this week to stay connected to the latest information as there's a lot on the line for West Claremont when it comes to the budget bill that will be approved in June. So high level details is that we will be putting an op ed in the newspaper this week that, that does a call to action to our community to get involved with advocacy. What's really important to note is that, you know, just seven years ago, the state was paying 50% of the share of student education and then local was paying 50%. As time has gone on and as property values have gone up, then we are more, it's 30%. Did you say 32?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two percent being paid by state and the rest being shouldered by local. And so there needs to be strong advocacy in our community from our chairs, your chairs and the community at large to expect the state to do their portion of, of student education. So we'll be sending, whatever we put in the paper, we'll also send out to families. We have a template that people can just take our template as is and use that to help them craft their messages with our legislators and make sure that the voice of West Claremont families and community members are, are told. Because our challenge really is that risk of losing state funding that we cannot afford to lose clearly from our story. So anything you would add?
I think for us, for our school district, because you'll hear a lot about the fair school funding plan. But I think what's most important to us is there's a provision in there, in that plan, in that formula that provides a guarantee to our school district. That's at risk. When that door opens up to say, we're going to, or in legislation that they're going to start reducing that guarantee, that door gets opened up and over time, that gets reduced. We're, we're advocating that the guarantees stay in place, number one. Two is, there, there is a provision on the cash balance and we'll talk a little bit more about that. But the, the cash balance provision states that if a school district has a cash balance or excess cash beyond 30%, then the provision states that the county auditor not may, but will, okay, reduce the taxes to that community. So in other words, there's a provision that takes the local control, the local management of our finances kind of out of our hands and temporarily can reduce the funding to the school district, not from the state, but at a local level. Okay? So that's a provision that we do not want within the, the third thing is that, you know, there, there's this, there's this ability to look at the state funding separate from property tax reform. And from our perspective, those two things are school funding, okay? It's state funding and local funding. So part of what we look at when we look at the, the property tax reform, we all know that it's an issue. We all know that something's going to be done, okay? It's, it's not, you know, it, it's really what is going to be done. And I think part of our advocacy is if it's going to be done, we, we advocate for that targeted relief, not just kind of a, a, a broad brush that, that certain things be done because it really involves funding that we get both at the state and, and local level. One of the things that, that, you know, it, it's really kind of hard to explain, but state funding is really based off the fact of local wealth. And so what is really saying is our property values went up and they consider that with the adjusted gross income or average adjusted gross income, we are being looked at as to more of a wealthy community and the state is saying that we should be paying more. So if those guarantees go away, meaning we're going to get less funding from the state, okay? What's the real message? The real message is you should be paying more locally when the fact is that we're in the lowest spend of, you know, the lowest 16% within the state. So I, you know, there's some mixed messages there with the whole thing. So you want to give relief, but yet if we get less state funding, that's adding more pressure locally. So it seems like, you know, there's a lot of mixed messages that are going out there. But I, I think our message is very clear. I'd love for us to advocate for more funding. And right now, we're just grappling to say, at least keep us whole of what we've been getting, okay? Which is, it just, you know, it seems odd to me that, that we're doing that, but that's exactly what's happening as we go forward. So that's it.
All right, you're up with the five-year forecast.
Okay, with the five-year forecast. It did pop up. Okay. So. See if it goes this way. Because it shut it off. All right. Now it's all off. And this is not working. Okay, so the five-year forecast, as the board knows, it is done twice a year, once in November, and then it's updated in May, okay, for that year. This PowerPoint presentation or this presentation is very similar to what we did in November. So what I just really want to do is highlight what's changed, okay, as we go forward with it. And so there's, there's the forecast, there are the notes to the forecast, and then there's this presentation that kind of highlights some things with it. So you know that it's a required document that the board has to adopt twice a year. It's presented and adopted twice a year. It really focuses on the general fund and the money and, and our operating fund that the board gets to do. The purpose is very specific to, to three things. Ms. Sambley, you brought up one of those things earlier, right, when we talked about the personnel section, okay? And so that forecast really determines how far the board president, superintendent myself can certify what we spend on, okay? And so when we had negotiations back in 2023, when the leadership of the superintendent and Dr. Foltz came back and said, we're going to do interest-based bargaining and, and, and that has more to do with how we live the contract sometimes than, than just the contract, we were only able to settle for two years, okay? So the 24, 24, 25 year and the 25, 26 year. Okay, those were the two years that we could certify going forward. Because back at that time, there was a lot of uncertainty, even on the property valuations, right? Was it going to be 15? Was it going to be 23% or was it going to be the 39% that it ended up being, okay? At that time, we only, only could certify what we projected, what was there. So the certification is one important part. There's another important part. The other important part is it looks at, it gives the ability for the Department of Education and workforce and for the Art of State's office to look at our fiscal health, okay? Are we in or are we approaching fiscal distress? Which really means is our cash balance going down so that at some point in the future, we've got to make some budget adjustment or, or, you know, we're running out of funds, okay? So that fiscal health is an important part, you know, of doing that five-year forecast to do it, okay? I'm going to go through some of this stuff. What, what's really overriding this forecast in May is that we are at the 25 year from January through June is the deliberation on the state's biennium budget. So how much money is the state going to allocate to public education starting July 1 of '25 for the 25, 26 year and for the 26, 27 year, okay? Bottom line is, that's a big uncertainty right now. We know that there's provisions in there that in the past, in the, in the foreseeable past, we've been held at the same dollar amount, even though the formula has changed and there's new formula. But the district has been getting the same dollar amount. As our local funds increase, as that dollar amount stays the same, that share between local, local and state gets more skewed, you know, in favor of the local funding more to do it, okay? So again, the main drivers of our revenue are local and state funding with it, okay? What are some of the concerns that are there? Okay, the governor came out with his, with its budget in January, his proposal in January, gave, gave little funds to public education. But one of the big things to our school district was it started to open the door on the guarantee that said, hey, we're going to start phasing that guarantee out, okay? You will hear a number that it says, we're going to give you 95% of what you got the year before, okay? That doesn't seem like it's a, a huge cut. But what you don't see is that every year, the formula is updated and because our valuation, our property values went up and there is a factor of one-third of that valuation, so it does a three-year averaging. So because our valuations went up 39%, almost 40%, okay? The first year, only a third of that came into consideration. When we get into the second year, which we're going to now, the two-thirds of that valuation is there. That means the guarantee, that we're deeper into the guarantee than we were the year before, okay? So although the 95% is on the prior year, our current guarantee is deeper. So with the governor's proposal, we lost over the two-year biennium, $2.1 million. It went to the House. And it was, you know, the superintendent myself met with our local representatives and one of the things that they wanted to do was hold us harmless and have every school district in the state get at least something. What that proposal did though, it, it sort of bridged or abandoned the fair school funding formula, which a lot of the associations in the school districts were kind of dead set against because they worked hard to put that in place and wanted to keep that, okay? The fact of the matter for this school district, it did hold us harmless and it did give us a little bit more, okay? The House version of it. It also then had the provision of it in it with a 30% cash balance. And we'll talk about that in a little bit because we're doing some things according to that, okay? But that's there. The other concern is on the property tax reform and all, all, all of the different elements of property tax are being considered. And what does that mean? Well, we're at the 20 mil floor. That means when property values go up, we do get more funding locally. They're looking at the emergency levies and putting the emergency levies, which we have too. We have the emergency levy of 2020 and we have a continuing substitute. They want to put that against the 20 mil floor. We have Inside Village that is in our permanent improvement fund. They want to put that into the 20 mil floor, okay? So all of those things are, I don't like to use the word threat, but they're, they're threatening our revenue stream to us. The superintendent made a great comment, you know, a while past is, you know, when you look at our budget, because we spend in the lowest 16% on, on average, the expense per pupil, we don't have an expense problem. We've got a revenue problem, okay? And the revenue problem comes from, comes from that state level where we're not getting any additional funding. And there's the threat that we would get reduced funding, okay, to that. I think people really need to understand that. I think that's, that's what we're going to try and come out. We've had put that forward. It's been a consistent message. And as we look at others helping us advocate, we, we need to get that across to do that. The, the biennium budget is now at the Senate level. I believe last Friday was the cutoff for the senators to submit amendments to the bill. I don't know if we, I, I haven't seen anything from that yet of what's being submitted and, and they'll probably be put together this week to do that. So kind of the summary of what I just said on the budget timeline, we're, we're in May. So if you look at kind of two-thirds across the way, it's at the Senate level. They will come out with their version. It will then go to conference committee between the Senate and the House to come out with another version. Everything has to be approved by June 30th.
Yeah, and I'm meeting with Senator Blessing on when, who had a proposal, so we can learn more about that.
So those are forward. So I, I did give the board and, you know, at your, at your seat there in front of you is the forecast itself, okay? And I just want to, I just want to highlight for you a couple of things with it. Actual doesn't change, right? So the first three columns are the same as they were in November. And so what has changed from fiscal year '25 through fiscal year '29, okay? I'll start at the very end. If you go to line 10.10, which is on the second page, and that is the fund balance June 30th for certification for appropriation. And if you go all the way to that far right column, fiscal year 2029, in, in November, the deficit was a little bit over $9 million in the deficit. The deficit increased over those five years, an additional $1 million. Where did that come from, okay? Most of that is driven by, there, there were some changes in the current year. There were some changes in, in '26. But most of that is driven by the fact that our health insurance costs are now being projected to be over 10% beginning January 1 of '26, okay? This coming January. We are working with our consortium on ways to mitigate that increase. And we've told you about working with Employee Management Services, not just our district, but all the districts in Detroit and curtail that increase to do that. But when you add those increases over those four-year periods, that adds an additional $1 million. What's not in this, okay? We did not make any adjustments to the revenues for any pending legislation because we don't know what that is. We won't know that till probably closer to June 30th, okay? So pretty much the revenue projections that were in November are holding true to today. There's a, there's a little bit of adjustment in the current year for, we, we did make more earnings on investment. That is recorded in there. There's some modifications on the state funding based on enrollment in the categorical programs. Those are in there, okay? But for the most part, they stayed the same. What else did I not put in there, okay? You'll recall that I notified the board that the county auditor's office notified us that they advanced to the district an additional $2.1 million, okay? That is really not due now, but due in August, okay? So they, they, in simple terms, they overpaid us, okay? They also told us that, that we could keep that. We're going to have a discussion in a few minutes, okay, with that, but I did not put that in this forecast. The main reason why is because as we get closer to June 30th, if it's hitting the 30% cap and that becomes a reality, okay? I will make arrangements to refund that back to the county, June 29th, June 30th, okay? And then at the same time, request that that advance be given back to us, okay, to do that. So we'll, we'll have that discussion in a couple of minutes, okay, to do that. But that is not added in this forecast to do that, okay, with it. So I, I can go through this presentation again, but I think you recall from the past that our revenues are stair stepped, our expenses follow an inflationary trend line. So cash balances are built up, then cash balances are depleted, okay, to do that, all right? The other thing that's, that's changed that we know over time is that we're going to have some added pressures on our general fund. The bond issue did not pass. We know that, that as we look forward, there was about the study that, that was done with Mr. Lefada and Mr. Gephardt with the architects was about $65 million in major maintenance that could happen over the next five to 10 years. How we look at setting those funds aside, okay? Whether through the operating fund or for the, through the permanent improvement fund, we need to really look at, we need to do some planning on, on preparing for that to have happened. We need, you, you had really, you know, you had, you had two, two pieces of information today that come really important. Annually, it gets updated, but Mr. Lefada, Mr. Gephardt do the building condition and utilization, right? So condition means what conditions are our buildings in? Utilization means Dr. Foltz gives the Roma projections and how are we utilizing that space, okay? One of the things we don't talk about, we did talk about with the bond issue and Mrs. Pruston's in the back, but it's about that, you know, the, the learning environment and that modern learning environment, okay? Didn't get the chance to talk about that. You heard a little bit about, you know, and the innovation and what spaces we need, need for that. But those are the things that really impact our budget and what we look at, okay? So as we go forward, we need to start planning on that, okay? So as I told you what's in there and I told you what's not in there, expect something in July and August. Expect that we will redo this five-year forecast once we get more information, okay? It will change, okay? I can't today tell you how it will because that's based on what the state does with the biennium, but, but it will change, okay? I'm betting that it will, okay? So again, I, you've seen all of this before. If you have questions over it, let me know. One of, one of the things that will come up, I was going to go back to this because I know, Mr. Patton, you brought it up in the past and that's the days cash that we have, okay? How many days, you know, and a little bit we'll talk about a cash balance policy that's being recommended by the associations that we adopt one, okay? Well, I think what's happened is the 30% came about where, when someone must have looked at and read a cash balance policy where we should at least have 60 days or 90 days cash on hand, okay? And if you take the, the sixth year of the 90 days divided by a year, you know, it's going to be between, you know, that 25 and 30% of what we should have on hand as a minimum, not as a maximum. And all of a sudden, the minimum became the maximum and it's just the opposite of what we should be doing, okay? So to do it. So I, I do know and we do recognize, okay, that we continue to, continue to have efforts where we made a commitment to not come back to the voters before '24. We've moved that to '26 because we did get the additional funding of the valuation increase. We continually look how we can and if we can move that from '26 to '27, okay? And we will continue to do that. I think, you know, and as I heard from each of the board members, we have to live within our means. We know what our, we know what those totals are and wherever we can take advantage of that, we will. We talked about staffing, okay? We know that through normal staffing methods that we have, now although enrollment went up slightly because of where the students fell, we're able to reduce positions, okay, teaching positions in that, five to seven positions with that, okay? I did build that in that forecast too, so that is in there as we go forward. So we're trying to take advantage of all those things. One of the things I will note, that's just. One of the things I will note, that's just, that's a normal process. That isn't, that didn't come about by saying, hey, we're gonna cut the budget or cut positions. That came about just through our, our normal procedures of how we do staffing, okay? That we do things like that, okay? I don't know if there's any questions that you have on this, but this is an action item that we have for the board, that they approve the five-year forecast as submitted and along with that, the notes that accompany that forecast. So, the recommendation that the board approve the five-year forecast as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Ramone. You've heard the recommendation. Would someone like to make a motion?
Some moved.
Thank you, Mr. Rudy. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Samborn, thank you. Is there any discussion? Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Ms. Samborn?
Yes.
Mrs. Spencer?
Yes.
Mr. Patton?
Yes.
Mr. Chubbly?
Yes.
Five, yes, thank you.
Well, thank you guys so much for your patience. What we're getting ready to do is to talk about the May bond issue failure, the big picture impact and the next steps. And it's, it was very important that you have a lot of background information to help do that. The, including the enrollment, the finances, et cetera. So what I'm gonna, while Dan gets this presentation up, I'm just gonna ask you guys to stand up, because just stand up for a few minutes so we can just move our bodies a little bit while we're listening. And if you don't mind, grab this poster, because this is gonna be one of the first things that we look at. Whenever you look at any of our literature that we send out, like our newsletters, for instance, we have on it usually, we listened, we learned, and we responded. And we've made a real intent and real intentional effort to do that through all of our engagement, through all of our, whether it's a focus group or a survey or town hall meeting. And because of our listening and engagement, we've made decisions. You have made decisions at this district that have led us to some really great outcomes. And so I give this to you as just a reminder of the academic success that we saw in, in the latest results. And I say latest, but we're just now hearing from the state on the preliminary that we're getting back. And we're, we're seeing some big gains. I mean, some places, seven points percentage-wise better than last year, some even more than that. We're continuing to be on the rise as a district. And we're, even though we spend in the bottom 16% of the state, we are investing that money wisely. You're seeing on the back, you're seeing programs that have been added, things like Leader and Me, programs that our community and our families say, you're like, we, we want some education in there about, you know, our vision is learn, lead, succeed. We wanna make sure we're academically strong and we wanna make sure our kids are developing leadership skills. And you've heard tonight with the Innovation Course of Study, that we don't want programming that is outdated. We want modern curriculum that is going to set our kids apart, that's gonna create a competitive advantage. So we've listened, we've learned, and we've responded. And now the ultimate, we have a ballot issue on May 6th and we failed pretty big. And so what is listening, responding, and learning, what does it mean now? When, when the community shouts very loudly about a failure? Because the reality is, you can't, it's not black and, it's not black and white for us. It's not gray. Just because the community says no doesn't mean our problems disappear. We had five problems we identified several years ago. It was safety and well-being of students, educational programming, purpose and design of school, facilities, and transportation. And that's what we've been working on. Our community, and at this point, we don't know, did they not like the plan? Did they not wanna spend any money? Is it because it had income, earned income tax plus, plus property tax? Like what is the reason? There's still lots of questions that we have. So we, we hear people loud and clear, but what does it really mean ultimately? And for you guys and for us, just because people say no doesn't mean this problem goes away. We still, we have a lot of work still to do. So I'm gonna flip through this really quickly, but I just wanted to center us on the past a little bit before we get into discussion tonight, because we really, as a team, need to hear from you guys. So the first is just to remind everybody, as part of our strategic plan, that we're, that we gathered all the data from the community to decide what goes into this plan. The, the three-year objective is that we're gonna create a long-term master facilities plan and transportation plan that addresses the aging buildings and equities across the district and the diverse needs of our, of our growing student body. So we're still committed to that. And the strategy that we use is to educate all stakeholders about the impact of the facilities, transportation, and technology on modern learning and student outcomes. Well, we've been working on that. Did it make the impact that we wanted to, to get a passage? No. So is it enough? Are we talking to the right people? Are we saying all the things that people need to hear? That's what we have to figure out, because our goal was to gain community understanding for a master facilities plan. We, we have a very proactive approach with what we put on the ballot. Maybe being proactive isn't what people are interested in doing right now. Maybe people are not interested in spending money. Maybe they don't like the plan. Maybe they don't like the income. Maybe they don't like the property tax. Whatever it is, we, we have to dig in and figure that out. Because this, this goal is, is still an important goal for the long-term success of this school district. And just because, and I, I'm gonna click through here, but just because we did pass doesn't mean we don't have a lot of work to do when it comes to our learning environments. So I, I bring you here just to remind you of the big picture financial planning. This is a slide Dan did a long time ago, so there's nothing new on here, but it just gives a quick summary as to, well, what's true about West Claremont. Well, we spend in the bottom 16, this, it was, this, we were 17% when we did this slide, but it's really 16% today. That means per student in Ohio, we're spending $2,000 less per kid or $40,000 less per classroom. And the way the funding model works, just as Dan just shared, we are still being funded at 2019 levels. It is 2025 and the inputs have not increased since 2019. So no matter the inflation, no matter how many students have come into this school, we are still, we're on the guarantee funded at 2019 levels. Who can keep up if they are still being paid at 2019 levels, right? So this is where we call out and make it very clear that this is about a, a state funding problem and a state share problem. This is not about it being a spending problem. And then we add two other details. We have a master's facilities plan to solve district challenges. And if, and to do that, we need to add additional funding to the mix. And if that doesn't work, we're gonna compromise being able to have positive momentum with our student achievement. Because what will happen is money that we've been able to invest in the classroom will start to be diverted into break fix, keeping the lights on, operating, the aging buildings, et cetera. And so that's why it's important that you also see in, in this bottom bullet here that our most recent five-year forecast, even tonight, indicates that without increases from the state funding sources, there will need to be additional local funding in 2026. We always say here, we had, we had said at first it was gonna be '24. We are able to push it to 2026. Our hope would be able to get it to 2027, but with the unknowns with the state budget, we just, we aren't sure if that's even a possibility and what it would take. And so not funding this facility plan and having to put money from classroom into facilities will cause the mileage of any request we'll have going forward to be higher than it would have been otherwise. So those are just important, big picture, basic financial things to note. And the next thing is this, the timeline, and this is just to remind you what's, what's in store for us. So this May 2025 ballot issue has passed. Looking ahead, that green box is to remind you that the heavier enrollment, and David said it tonight, the heaviest enrollment years are coming in the next three. So that the bulk of that projection is not in, spread out over all the way to 2030. It's like coming in the next three years. That's why that green is there. We also wanna remind you that negotiations, our contract, as we mentioned tonight a couple of times, that that two-year agreement will be up. And so by contract, that means we will start working on negotiations in February. So that is a topic that has to go into this big picture. As we continue to plan for 2030, where, just to remind you that there is a renewal from the 2020 levy planned for that at this time. So it's just kind of knowing, we, we have to kind of eat the elephant as a board and as a team and understand the whole picture and then take, take it into pieces. We were very clear that if the levy passes, we're gonna be able to continue the momentum, investing in the classroom in the ways that we have been, where we've been seeing some tremendous success. If it fails, that money is diverted, the things change. And we, we've beat that to death tonight, talking about it over and over. But clearly, we will just have to start spending money on modulars and fixes and all the things to keep us able to operate. David reminded you of this list. We brought this to you, you know, during the fall. And we even had some questions about it tonight. Just to remind everybody that we, we are out of space now. You know, we are very tight. And so we'll have to start doing more intrusive changes. Things like half-day kindergarten, because we could go down half our classes in kindergarten overnight with that one change alone. What you have to know about every single bullet up there, though, is every bullet has an impact. And that's our job, is to make sure that, okay, so kids come into West Claremont, half of them are ready according to the state assessment for kindergarten and half of them are not. And that's with already getting full-day programming right now. So you cut that down to half-day programming, what happens to that, those statistics? How far are we able to grow our students in half the time that we are today? So it's, it's just kind of thinking through, yes, there's lots of things we can do. What's gonna be the impact of each one? So, this page here, and we're gonna get to the discussion really quickly, but this page here is just to kind of remind you as a board, these are all the things that have to be kind of swirling around in our minds in the background as we think about next steps. And kind of if, if there's any homework, it's just getting commands of these, these details. So we've already covered the five-year forecast. So really understanding what Dan has said tonight about the forecast and what David and Josh have said about enrollment and staffing. It'll be really important to understand, we have, we're out of space now, our, our projections are that we are growing. That our staffing situation, the high level, is that it's not as easy anymore to find teachers. The population of students going into college for education is decreasing greatly and it's not gonna be a luxury going forward. Number two, what are our operational facilities improvement priorities? Chuck brought these to you a couple of weeks ago, but just to keep them top of mind, the two main ones that will be focused on this summer are windows at Holly Hill in targeted places, not throughout the whole place, and the roof at the middle school. Those are the two main, main topics. The third thing is this reality that according to legal counsel and how, and their interpretation of the order of state's rules, we cannot survey from this chair, from this podium here, we cannot survey the families and the community and find out, why did this go down? Is it because you don't wanna spend any money on it? Did you not like the plan? Is it because of the income tax? Is it because of the property tax? What's the main reason right now? We cannot survey that here. But it's gonna be imperative that this, that the district and this board know the answer to those questions to plan what comes ahead. Number four, we gotta stay on alert on, on the proposed legisla-, oh, go ahead.
Can I pause you just a minute? So, so we can't survey, but as, as I've, as I've continued to ask, we can have the community come up and give us their, their thoughts and their opinions.
Yeah, the, the community can definitely come in here. Other organizations that are not connected to, are funded by us could do surveys, so, so it is possible. And those kind of surveys and, and experts in that, you know, type of, type of survey are out there. But it's just like, we can't put taxpayer money toward.
Okay.
So it leaves us really at a strong disadvantage to not be able to unpack this. But yes, we would love to have people come to the podium and, and explain, because we, we really do believe when people have all the information, when they have all the facts, we, we are more likely to come to the same conclusions. And we, we just know this is a difficult time in the economy and we've gotta be able to sort these things out. We knew that going into it. We'll stay, pay attention, paying attention to the legislation. That'll get all wrapped up by the end of June. Dan and I will continue our advocacy work and, and ask the community to join us. As you know, we have a transportation study, another transportation study that's coming out. That's, it's comprehensive, looking at every route we have, trying to again achieve that middle school start time change, trying to look at high school busing and look at the whole picture and figure out, are there efficiencies we can pick up to make some of these things that we haven't been able to make true to happen? And as you know, there's a direct correlation to like where the routes are and then where the buildings are. So that means where the kids are. So David's attendance boundary changes, Randy's transportation report, Chuck's focus on buildings. All those things go together and we have to understand how they impact each other. David's already made you aware tonight, we're already increasing class sizes, specials are on a cart. Those are the big changes for next year and even more will take place if we have to. And I give examples like, we, David mentioned that Amelia is looking to grow. Well, you see that Holly Hill isn't in the same way. So there could be targeted attendance boundaries between Amelia and Holly Hill. Like that would be an example of what we mean when we say this. And then finally, I wanted to make it clear to you guys that just like we had to put a resolution of necessity and a resolution to proceed, and there are all these steps that we had to take to get an issue on the ballot, the deadlines for the November ballot are July 7th, July 29th, and August 6th. So I wanna just put it out there for you tonight to, so you know what that is. And you may choose to let me know tonight. We're taking that off the table. We're not interested in that at all. Or, ooh, we gotta get our act together here and make sure we have those resolutions in place. So you might be ready to, to have a say in that tonight or not. But I, I just wanted to make sure you had that knowledge, because that'll be right around the corner. Next slide is really where the discussion needs to come in. And what we did is we brainstormed several now-what steps. And I'm, I'm not pressuring you to say you have to make a decision tonight and decide everything and then let's call it a day. What I am asking and putting some pressure on is A, are we considering November or not? B, of all these choices, and I'll go through them quickly here in a second, is there more data and information that you need that would help you lean toward one versus the other? I'm not bringing you any kind of recommendation. I'm just saying, here's a lot of choices. Are there other choices that you guys are thinking of? And what, what more information do you need so that we could get to a point down the road where you can decide these are gonna be the next steps? So the obvious one is, will the board go back to the voters in November with the same exact plan that we have today? Will the board go back to the voters, maybe in November, maybe some other time? That would be a modified plan. We learned tonight OFCC would let us modify our plan. So I just thought one example up there would be 5'8" middle school only and that we just go for that piece. That's a possibility. Should the board focus on the operational levy? All along, we've said, once we get through this May issue, we're gonna have to turn our attention to operations. So does the board want us to just focus on operations and put the facility master plan on hold and just break fix, just make it work? Is that what the board wants? Does the board want us to get out of line with OFCC? Now, tonight, we voted on something that allows us to have that flexibility, but at one point you might just say, we're gonna forfeit, forfeit that money. We're not gonna be able to bring it to fruition in 16 months. So we're gonna just take that off the table and get back in line someday when we can. Does the board wanna do a combination? Do you wanna have a property? Sorry, not property. Do you wanna have an operational levy and a bond at the same time in May? Coming up next year, a year from now, or down the road? Do you wanna not consider facilities at all? Do you wanna say, you know what, what matters most is operational? We don't want anything on the ballot this May or next May. Well, we already have one. Okay, so you don't want anything in November or May, so start cutting. Start reducing and push this thing as far away as possible, because our, our community is not gonna vote. And, and so we need to start cutting and making reductions to get us to stretch as far as we can. And then I left number six to say, maybe you have other versions. We, we just tried to think of all the things that could possibly be a version and to put it in your mind, so that again, you don't have to decide tonight, but if we could rule out November, let's rule it out. And if there's any direction you can give us to come back to you with more data and information, give us that direction.
Well, I had a question about our assets, our property assets, about selling them and maybe helping us with some of the offset of the permanent improvements. Instead of just doing a few windows at Holly Hill, actually do all of the windows at Holly Hill. I don't know, the last picture I saw, the windows were actually falling out of Holly Hill. And to my understanding, the, the thought was later, we might even keep that building. So if we're gonna put, anyway, selling the assets that we already had to offset some of the permanent improvements that we, that would be something that was...
As a way to generate some revenue?
Right.
Yeah, okay. What else is on your minds?
Again, me personally, I, I don't think we've got enough information and with the timetable that you're giving us, to even think about a November anything. If, if we have to start these things in July, we're already in, you know, the middle of May. So I, I personally say November needs to be off the table, because again, we haven't, we, we don't know what the community liked or disliked. I think we need to figure out a way to be able to get more information from them. So my opinion is November's off the table.
I agree.
Okay.
I don't think...
Yeah, I just think that that's way too soon.
So could we do a town hall, a couple of town halls before November and try to figure out what the community will support, what they will get behind to help our school district? district move forward?
We can certainly do--
I think we need to, we need to do something to find out, what will you support? How will you support it? And when will you be able to help us do this?
But here's--
Because specifically, we have buildings, we have needs, and we're not, it's not going to go away, it's always going to be here. So we have to find out from the community, hey, what will you do to help us move this district forward? We have children in this district, we are out of space, we need help. Can you help us? Give us five bulleted points that will, that we can write down and we can focus on as a district and see where we are. And maybe we could do a ballot initiative in November, but maybe not, I don't know. It might be too short of a timeframe.
We have to know in July.
Yeah, November's too soon. But, but again, I'll go back to, we've done these things. The que-- the big question is, is how do you get the community to come into and, and tell us what they want to hear? Like, we've had town hall meetings, and, and some of them unfortunately didn't have the success rate that others have. Not all of us pay attention to Facebook, not all of us, we don't, at least, I don't gather all of my information from Facebook or the Nextdoor app. We need to hear it. And the other issue with that is, is that we, as a board, needs to hear it, not one individual. We all need to hear the message, because maybe it is a good message, but we all need to hear it. Because, again, my understanding that I've learned on my tenure on the board is, is that we are now a board. Once I leave this board, I'm just Ryan Patton. I, I don't, I don't have any authority on the board. So it's important to get those. So, yes, I agree with you 100%.
Yeah, so both of you are really saying the same thing, like, we need more information.
We need more information, yes.
So I'm just pointing out to everybody, just the reminder of, there will be certain things we can ask and we can learn. And we will certainly do as many town halls or engagements as you want us to do. We are restricted on the kinds of things we can ask about and the things we can talk about. It's like doing things with three hands tied, or, you know, three hands tied behind your back. And so we will need help from that, from the outside, because there are sophisticated instruments that can help you understand why something is hot or cold. You, you could, you can learn that, but it's not something we can pay taxpayer money on. So that's very tricky. It, it, uh, because I know we all want to know, but we, we are limited on what we can ask and what we can do. And I know it makes no common sense to people, but that's the reality.
Well, I think that the community did speak very loudly when they said, no, whether good or bad, or whatever, the way we did it, or the way it was handled, whatever, they don't want that.
But we need to know why, though.
Well--
I, was it because they have no money? Is it because they didn't like--
Yeah, to me, if, if I was just saying that, I would just say, they, they feel, whether it's true or not, they cannot afford any more taxes, period, because of the major hit that we took last year. I mean, 43%. And then everybody's property, everybody's, my homeowner's insurance went up because my, the value of my home went up. So everybody else is doing the same. I mean, you know, I don't think that anybody's, I'm not even special or different than anybody else is, but when they vote 85 or 83%, no, I don't think we should go back this year at all. I don't even think it should be on the board, on the table at all.
So, so then we, as a board, need to, to, to have the community help us be, to advocate with where this is coming from. This is not coming from here. The, the developments are not coming from here, the cuts are not coming from here, they're coming from other places.
Right, but--
And so we, we need assistance with getting that--
Right, but this is the hand we're dealt. So what we have is, we, we, we have, we don't have enough money. So this reduction thing that you've got on number five, we should probably move that to number one.
Well, they're not ordered.
Okay.
They're not ordered, they're just listed.
Okay, so, and--
In terms of priority, they just started--
Okay, I see. You just ordered one, that's fine. Maybe we should start there in showing the good faith to the community that we are willing to sacrifice. We are willing, we're going to try to do this, and I understand that it's not going to make it any easier, but maybe if they see, well, you know what, maybe they're, they're trying at least, and we're going to do this, and this, and this.
We've already pushed it two years beyond what we originally stated, like--
I know, but that was before our taxes went up 43%, right?
I think taxes are always going to be going up.
It's never 43%.
I understand that. But--
In the history.
We've pushed it two years beyond.
Because our taxes went up, it helped.
I understand. But like another year or two, I don't think is going to drastically change 83%.
Well, I didn't say a year.
Well, this says 2027 or beyond.
Well, I didn't, I don't mean that. I just said, maybe we should start reducing, and then maybe next May, we can go back and say, hey, we have done this in good faith, we have tried to think of what you guys want us to do, and say, maybe this will help you understand that we are really, really up against it, and we are. Maybe that would help. I, I'm just throwing it out.
I agree, I agree that this year is not the year to try.
Yeah, I don't think so.
But I do think that if we got more information from the community, that we could put together maybe a modified plan. Again, I don't know, this is something that we're going to have to find out.
So that, so that a question would be, like Tammy asked about what would selling assets look like? So that'd be more data we could bring to you. You just asked, what would a modified plan look like? What would that cost? Do you want us to bring that to you? Because that can be research we can work on.
I think, I think that would be good, yes.
Okay.
So all these plans, though, because even the modified plan, it does nothing to Merwin, and it does nothing to Holly Hill, and those are two schools that are also becoming a cause. That is the reason we merged Glen Estee and Amelia, and there was some--
Well, this, this is just an example. A modified plan could include those two schools.
Uh, it could, I mean, it could be whatever you tell me, but we could break it down multiple ways. We, we just used it as an example, because we knew we had that flexibility with OFCC. And if you think you could get it in two bites, I mean, one, one of the things to think in the big picture is, when you're a neighborhood school district, having one neighborhood, care about another neighborhood, is like moving mountains. So we already knew that we were up against that. So one of the reasons things were packaged the way where they were is because of all the impact in the middle, because it impacts everybody. So there's some goodness to the packaging of the plan because of the high impact. You start separating it out, and you do 5'8", and then you do, well, we need to get those additions at Clough, so then you do Clough, and then you do, oh, we need to get those additions at, we need a new Holly Hill Merwin, so then you do that. Can you piecemeal this plan and get support all the way around? Like, that, that's at risk. I mean, that's a question. And I'm not saying it's impossible, it's just, it's alre-- it's already hard, and that would add more difficult things. So I, I think we should look at it. I'm just mentioning that as, it's a, it's a continual challenge in neighborhood school districts.
I personally would like Dan to look at number four--
Okay.
And look what a combination plan would look like.
Okay.
Like, what would that cost be? What, what would that look like?
Okay.
And we can't, we can't do what we did during the last levy, right?
You mean the 2020 levy? We did a survey in the last levy, 2020 levy.
Even just the way we, we went out and gave information, we can't do it the same.
Yeah, so the superintendent and the treasurer are very restricted, so we are allowed to give information, and that was true back in 2020, and we did that. We just did it to an extreme level. We were 85, 90 sessions. Now, we, we just kind of followed the template that we had been using, which is about, you know, three to four town halls a semester, and then took invites. But I would say, like, the PTOs invited me in, and one legislative group, political party invited, well, maybe it was two, but we got to do one. Not a lot of people tried to get this information out. And so that's why it's like, yes, it is loud and clear, people don't want to spend money right now, we think. But what else about the plan do they not? Like, do they not like the plan? Like, we've got to know that. And so there, what we can continue to do is to work with our legal on the things that we can ask. But I'll tell you, it's very limited, very, very limited, and it's frustrating, because we, we just want to know. And I'm not saying we're, we're like, we're dumb and we can't even predict some of these things, but the truth is, you guys need data in your hands.
So, so when you talk about, to go to Tammy's question about number five, the reduction piece, are we, are we talking about, because I guess I want to wrap my head around it, are we talking about reduction of staff, reduction of classes, reduction of, of art, things that are not required? Like, what is the reduction of?
That would, uh, we, we don't, we wouldn't know until we talked about it, but often, you know, Dan, Dan could look at, it would, you would have to tell us something like this. You would have to say, we don't want to come out till 27. What's it going to take? What has to be cut for us to not come out to 27? Or, we don't want to come out to 28. What's it going to take? And then Dan would do some projections, and then we would say, okay, that is equivalent to this amount of money, and we could start to show you, it breaks down to this many FTEs, this many admin, this many teachers, this many programs, this many services, things like busing being limited, you know, like that, that's where we would start to say, okay, this is what it would take to add all these things up to bring a proposal to you, to get to the dollar amount that would stretch it to 27, 28, or whatever you, whatever you would say. So that's, that's what you, you guys would direct on a time, we would come back with a number, and, and then show you in reality what gets taken out of the mix. Like, that's how that would work.
Because the way I'm visualizing this in my head is, let's just say we even go that route. We've already heard and established that staffing is, is, the pool is very thin. So when, then we do get to a place where like, uh-oh, not a good decision--
Yeah.
How are you going to fill those positions back?
So that, so that is the thing with every, yeah, you can do math easily, like, take a number and start whacking things away. It's, you have to understand the impact for each decision, and that would be what we'd have to bring to you. It's, okay, we can reduce busing, this would be the impact. We could reduce teachers, and this would be the impact. They go away, they never come back.
We're still hearing the impact of the busing. That was how many years ago? That was 11-plus years ago. We're still hearing the impact of that.
It's true, it's true.
So by reducing the busing 11 years ago, we're still hearing it.
I think that one thing we have to remember in this situation is, right now, every kid has a building to go to right now. And we have, we had a building solution, let's build some more buildings. Well, we already have buildings, why do we need to build some more buildings? People aren't impacted daily by the fact that we had a plan for buildings, and, but we already have some. People already, they're going to a place every day, so that--
I think that, I don't think that's true. I think people are being impacted every day. When your child gets on the bus, and they go to classrooms that are too busy, or they're too full, they do get impacted. And they, but they have to make choices on where their resources go. And this time, they chose, right now, they felt they cannot afford it.
Yeah.
So moving forward, this is the hand we're dealt, so, but if we go till next May, we're still under the 16-month--
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, May, May 26 would keep us in that 16-month window.
Right, so we can still be in May.
Yes.
If we wait till May, would we do any of the reductions? Would we have to do reductions? Or, because these reductions, or this, the stuff that's changing like next year, wouldn't have, I mean, we wouldn't have gotten any money, that wouldn't have mattered, really, right? Next year--
Are you talking about the, from the bond? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, right, yeah.
All, all it, there, there's no set dollar amount. Like, we give that, gave the estimate of $65 million that shows like all the repairs that would need to happen. So there's no one, there's no one specific thing. Like Randy was saying earlier, there's certain knowns that we know, that we, that we have to work on, and then there's known unknowns--
Right.
That you're just like, you know, crossing your fingers on.
Well, it's like the budget. We don't know what the state's going to do yet either--
Right.
--as far as that goes.
Right.
But right now, we do know that the levy failed--
Yeah.
Do know that our community's not happy--
Yeah.
They feel they cannot afford it. So now, we have to figure out what to do and if we're going to present it again. So I'm not, I think maybe May, my, next May.
Okay, so, so to consider a future May, so one of the options up there is to do a combination, operational and bond? Or do you want to look at just bond? Like, do you want to see what, looking at just one, or looking at both looks like?
I'd say look at both--
Okay.
And then look at each one separately.
Okay.
So that way, we have three different--
Okay.
--outcomes, and we can look at it as a board and figure out what we need to do and what we think the community may wrap their hands around and, and support the school district.
Yes, okay.
And within that, are you going to make reductions? Are you going to put that part of the plan as--
Well, we would need direction from the board. So the, the question is, like--
That's mine, mine.
Right now, we don't have to make reductions to do a operational levy in '26.
Correct.
Correct, like, that doesn't have to happen. If the board wants it to happen, you have to say, a dollar amount you want reduced, and then we would bring back the plan. But there's nothing saying that we have to do that right now. So it would have to, it would be a choice.
Well, I, personally, I think the community would feel better about moving forward on a, some kind of a levy if we showed good faith and tried to show that we are willing to reduce some of the force.
So, but that's what I'm saying, though, where is the good faith that we're not showing them? We're--
I didn't say we're not. I'm just saying, this is what I think--
But that's, but as I'm saying, though, so even if we did this reduction--
That's what I think.
We, we, where are we not showing them? We show them that we spend in the lowest amount. We've, we've established, according to Dan, is, is that the money is not, the issue is not what we're spending, it's what we're getting from the state and from, from our other partners. So like, I don't--
There was just, that's--
No, I understand, I just, I don't, I don't, I'm just, I'm--
Go to a slide--
Oh, sorry, which one?
enrollment--
Uh, which thing? Like, these?
There you go.
Yeah.
So some things that we could look at costing out, okay, and showing you the dollar amounts on. So for example, there is a real cost saving of moving back to half-day kindergarten, okay? With every action, there's a reaction, right? So we do that, superintendent also said, hey, we already have students that aren't coming in prepared. What's the impact of, right, right now, we have them for a whole day, if we have students only for a half a day at that early age, what's that impact on, on we go forward to the performance in the first, second, or third grade? Right? We, we know that that's going to be an impact. Okay, our reaction's going to get a reaction to it, okay? But we can go through and cost out what is the, the cost savings, right, of going from full-day kindergarten to half-day? Those, those, those things are there. We can, we can do that, we can show that, all right?
We also, one of the things that we've talked about, but it's not on that list, because it was kind of ruled out by the CAT team early on when we surveyed, but we could look at configuration. we could look at configuration. So, one possible cost savings could be, instead of neighborhood schools, grade-level schools across the system. So that could be something we'd cost out as well. It's not what people want, according to our surveys, but it is a way to reduce without changing, like, what kinds of services are offered. 'Cause everything else would be services in West Claremont changed dramatically.
I'd like to see that.
Okay.
Well, maybe show us both. Show us the neighborhood versus the grade level, and so we have its choice. We can see what may happen, or what may not happen.
Okay.
So you're saying Clough would no longer be Clough K through 5?
Yeah.
It could potentially be K through 3. Then-
Yeah, you could, I, I, I'll just, I'll just pick 3 schools. Like, if you went on the, um, Willowville, Summerside, Clough, and let's say we grouped them all together.
Yeah.
You would break the grade levels into thirds, and, you know, put them in each building, basically. So, you know, will that make sense transportation-wise? I don't know. But it, it is a way to maximize, like, if, if you have a small class size of second grade at this school, maybe this school could absorb it. So, so that's where you pick up efficiencies. So, it, it can be looked at. It's just not popular. And so, because our school district's so spread out, it's not like a Mason where everything is square-footage-wise close, or, um-
The density is great.
So, so, or, did you say the density?
Density.
Yeah, so it might be where you look at grade, uh, a grade level on one half of the district, grade level on the other half of the district. So that you're, you were, you know, cutting down that travel. So, again, I, I don't, we haven't run those numbers, but it's just something, um, that, that sometimes districts do, going to grade level as a way to reduce costs. And again, I would, if we get savings there, then it would, it would mean the programs stay intact. They would, we wouldn't be losing programs and services.
Could you find out, um, I know nobody wants to hear this, and I don't like to say it, but, um, going back to state minimum for transportation?
Yes, we can, state minimum for transportation. We can look at that.
And increasing participation fees for extracurriculars?
Yes. Yes, we can bring that back to you. So I know it's a lot to absorb, so you can spend some more time thinking about all the options. This is what I'm hearing so far. I'm hearing that November's off the table with this group right now. That we're not gonna try to get some resolutions in July and make something happen in November. Does that, does that feel correct? Okay. Um, kind of informate, that, I hear the word "May" a lot. That looking down to "May" feels good. Not that anybody's sold on that, but, but this idea of what happens if we're in "May"? Whether it's a combination, it's operational or facilities, whether there's some reductions or not. Give us some "May 26" options, is what I'm hearing. Is that, did I get that correct? Okay, and then with that, what would, um, these different variations? One being, what would a modified plan look like? What would a combo plan look like for "May"? What would cost savings of, of things that were on that list, like full-day, or full-day to half-day kindergarten as an example, neighborhood to grade-level schools as an example? And then, additional operational things, like transportation, extracurricular fees, et cetera. What would all those look like? So, does that capture what we think we said tonight? Did I miss anything?
Well, I've got some, uh, things I'd like to share. Um, other areas that we would like to consider. I've heard from several of my constituents, uh, over the last couple of weeks, and they wanted me to share the following information. Number 1, several have suggested that we reduce the district office staff from the top down. Have a Department of Government efficiency. Be more efficient and effective in everything we do. We need to stop creating positions for the district office. We have too many of those happening. We need to better budget like the taxpayers are in their own homes. School board members need to manage the funds slash money we already have. My daughter said that there may be a bill or something passed in Claremont County that gives the school boards the authority over new building developments. We need to stop participating and pick up on the pickup for all administrators. Push back on mandates that cost us money. We are at capacity, so we cannot take on more. Have the state figure out what we need in this case. Redistrict again. Stand up for kids in our district. That doesn't come with more money, but love and support. We have administrators that maybe forgot about this. We can't want a new car. We need and deserve a new car, but if you can't afford a new car, you don't buy it. You just take care of what you already have.
I think-
Go, go ahead.
I think some of those we already had.
Team, and this is what I'll say, is, is that if your constituents want to send these to you, we as the board need to hear it, not you reading what your constituents told you. So if your constituents want to come and stand at that podium, I'll hear them for 3 minutes. I'll listen to what they say, and I'll take what they say into consideration. As far as, uh, the several items, I mean, I'm not gonna sit here and, and highlight any of these, but, you know, have a Department of Government adoged. So, yet, we're trying to cut, but yet, we wanna bring in more things to do a doge. Where are their facts? Where do they think that we need to cut? Have them come tell us where they believe that we need to cut, so that we can show them our facts, and then we can go there and dive into it.
And why they want to cut it.
Correct. I mean, and as far as, you know, my daughter said that there was a bill or something being passed in Claremont County that gives the school board authority over new building development. What are they talking about?
I have no idea. She didn't know. And I said, well, I'll have to look into this.
So, you're here reading her, her message to the world, and you don't even have all the facts. It's important to, in order for us to get our messages out, and to be truth and verified, we have to have this information. So, I, me personally, I'd be very cautious reading what other people want. If any of these constituents want to be heard, they can stand right there for 3 minutes and be heard. I promise you, we'll listen to them. We may not engage, because that's our protocol, but we're listening to what everybody says. They are listening to what everybody says, and we're trying to figure out what the best answer is.
Well, you know what? People can't always come to these meetings all the time. They have other things in life. They have kids that have extracurricular activities, have baseball, softball, and other, other things in their life. So they can't come here all the time and give their, uh-
I, I understand.
Opinions.
Stand up for kids in our district. That doesn't always come from money, but love and support. Again, where is the facts that we're not loving and supporting on our kids? Every, every meeting, we've had some type of, of, just some type of recognition where we're loving on them. Where is the facts that, that our school district is not doing this? This is very, could be very damning to our district, because this stuff is not true. Like, I, I just, again, if somebody's got facts that we're not loving on our kids and supporting them, please come tell me, because I want to know about that. That is an issue. I, I, I would be screaming at the mountaintop for them to address that, if any of our administrations are not doing what they're supposed to do. Yes, we may not want a new car. We may not wanna buy a new car. But again, these things are a little bit different. Like, I, I, it's not like we're sitting here saying, "We want new shiny things." We're telling them that our buildings are falling down around us, and that we need to get these new things. At some point, I have to buy a new car. At some point, the car is just, it's not worth me putting any more money into it, because it's junk. I have to get a new car. So, I, 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 I mean, I-
So I, I know every, every constituent, every staff member, every administrator, everyone will have their opinion of what feels like a good use of district money, and what's not. Like, everyone's gonna have a say on that. And so what will be true here at this table, is that you'll give us direction, things like, "I don't wanna put a levy on in 26," or, "I don't wanna go back to the voters to 27." That will yield, as I said earlier, a number from Dan, so that then we will equate it to, these are all the things that we can reduce to the best of our ability, that will reduce, or will limit and minimize any impact to the classroom. And we'll bring those to you. We'll bring them to the community when it's time, to weigh out. Um, sometimes, we might, we might present A, B, and C, and then you decide, of the A, B, and C, we want these 2 or 3 things. I mean, it's, it's, we did this before with the 2020 levy. We brought, here are the things, like, if we don't pass, this is what has to go. And the board just, you know, agreed upon these certain things. And so, everybody can have their opinion. We have to actually match up dollars with services and programs, and give you real numbers. Because, I mean, people's opinions matter, but until you actually put a dollar amount to it, and then know the impact of getting rid of it, it's just an opinion. And so we would need to bring those things to you. And that's how this would work. Um, versus just random people saying, "Cut this, cut that, cut this, cut that." It would be, we need to come up with X amount of dollars. This is how we will get there. And we'll just keep bringing versions of it to you, until you would get something that you would be okay with, that you wanna put in front of people. So, that's how it would work.
And I, and I think that, like you said, everyone does have an opinion. Everyone, I, I talk to many people throughout my day, constituents who have opinions. But like, my job as a board member is to take that information, absorb it, and process it, and bring it to this table as my own. Not parroting off of a piece of paper comments that someone said. That's not what we're supposed to be here for. We're supposed to bring our piece to the table, not everyone's piece. Just off, comments off of paper, like-
Well, I think it's important that we, that the constituents have a voice.
They have a voice. They can stand right there and have their voice be heard.
They couldn't come. I just told you.
Listen, this isn't all from the same person, I don't believe.
No, it's from several different people.
Okay, so I think none of them can.
No, because it, well, number 1, it's Memorial Day weekend, so people are getting ready to go out of town. A couple of them said, "I'm getting ready to go out of town, Ms. Samborn, and I'm sorry, I can't come tonight."
Yeah. So, so the thing that, I think what we're all saying is that we, we care about what people have to say. And we've, we've shown a big commitment to that, whether it's been in this boardroom, through surveys, through focus groups, through town halls. We've, we've done that. And we, we can't do our job without hearing from people. So we're not going to stop. It's just, we're in a, this next journey is a little bit difficult, because we have some limitations. We, we want some answers that are gonna be harder for us to get from these chairs. So that's like one thing we have to overcome. And the second thing is, we need to continue to look at other methods. Uh, if somebody can't come, can they come to a Zoom meeting? You know, I'm, I'm just thinking of branching out and continuing to look at options for people to be able to participate, to help inform our decision-making.
And they can come to future meetings?
Yeah.
So, it's a second meeting, right?
Yeah, so-
Forsake a time.
This gave, this gave me and the team some really good direction. We won't bring it all back to you like in June. Like, it'll come in pieces, but we will, we'll bring it to you. Dan has some items that he's gonna go through, like, extremely fast.
I'm just gonna, I wanna add one thing to this, 'cause I would remain silent, 'cause I wanna listen. But, the dark cloud over all this is still that unknown of what's gonna happen by June 30th, right? 'Cause we're looking at these things here, but be, by June 30th, the state could come back and say, A, we're not gonna give you any more money, or B is, plan on receiving less money. Okay, so that, that comes with that. All right. Back to the agenda.
Yeah, policy.
There we go. Okay, so, and I, and I'll be brief, I'll be brief with items 10.01 and 10.02. So, our district does not have a, um, a cash balance policy on how much we should have on hand, okay? Uh, not that we didn't want one, not that I didn't recommend that we have one. It doesn't, doesn't exist. Um, I don't know, after over 40-some years, I don't know if it's good or bad to have one or not. It's a best practice to have one. This is a white paper that I'm providing to the board, um, to look at that. I will come back, no later than the June 30th meeting, okay? With a recommended policy, I will have a draft of that to you before June 30th, okay? Um, that policy will have it in 2 things. One is a lower limit. What is the minimum that we wanna have on hand, okay, of, of an available balance? When we looked at our 5-year forecast, and we looked at the number of days we should have on hand, best practices to have at least 60 days on hand, 2 months of that. We have a $100 million budget, so we're really looking at, you know, 2/12, 1/6 of that, you know? Anywhere from 12 to 15 million dollars on hand with it, to do it. The other thing it will have in it is, is there an upper limit, right? Right now, current legislation says, hey, if you have 30% or more, then, uh, not current legislation, current proposed legislation, okay, says if you have 30% or more, the county auditor will, okay, reduce that tax for that year, okay? And that could mean that it's gonna go down, and back up, and down, and back up, whatever, okay, to do that. So, I will come back, again, just background information on it, to have the white paper with it. I will come back with a, um, a recommended policy that we'll look at on June 30th, okay, to do that. All right. Um, second item, 9, or, let me get to it. 10.02, okay. I already kind of made a comment with it, but, um, in April, early April, we did receive a letter from the Claremont County Auditor's Office that we were "overpaid", quote-unquote, that's the word in the letter, "overpaid by 2.2 million 190,805 dollars," okay? I will also tell you that, you know, although that, you know, doesn't occur every day, it, it is an anomaly that happens, okay? It, this, this happened. It was based off an estimate, you know, the actual was overpaid. And so, sitting in our bank right now is technically 2.2 million dollars more than we should have, okay? Because of the unknown of that proposed legislation on 30% cash balance, okay, I want to inform the board that I may, between now and June 30th, depending on where that legislation is, contact the county auditor's office, tell them that I'm issuing them a check to refund that back to them, okay? So that the June 30th balance is not inflated. I'm not saying I'm going to do it. I'm saying that I may do it, okay? Depending, just, it's from you, from the board now, that that may happen, okay? So that our June 30th balance does not have it in it, and jeopardize putting us over 30%. Okay, so just, just kind of a notice that that's there, okay? I did have discussions with the county auditor's office. There was the allowance for us to keep that. I prefer to keep it, because we're getting interest on that money sitting there, okay, which helps us out, okay? But, as soon as I tell them I'm gonna write them a check, I will ask them and request that we, that get advanced back to us, okay? So that's there. If there's any concern on that, that's there. The second part of that is, recall that I notified you that there is pending, um, Duke Energy did file for a change in valuation. Um, and I've not heard anything on that yet, but it, it sounds like it's more than likely to go through. That goes back to tax years '21, '22, and '23. And the estimate for us is about 2.4 million dollars, that somewhere going forward, we would have to refund that back, okay? So just, just a, an awareness of that one, okay? So that's items, that takes care of items 10.02. Any, any questions on that?
You, I didn't, did you say that Duke was gonna give us about 5 years to pay that back, or are they still talking about that?
Correct. It won't happen immediately. It would be over time. So, my experience has been that, at least the number of years that they want it back, those are at least the number of years to go forward. So if it was at least 3 years, plus it goes back to '23, and that's 2, then it could be 5 years.
And, and the county tax money? We're gonna give it back to them, maybe, if we do that.
Correct.
And then, when are, when's our next draft? When are we supposed to get it back?
I would ask for it back, by the way.
Immediately?
We can request the advance back, but typically, typically, it would be at the end of July, in, July or August.
Okay.
Okay? So it, it would be a temporary, hand it back to you, hand it back to me.
Okay, okay.
Okay, that's a good question. All right. Okay.
Supplementing and amending?
Supplementing, item 10.03, supplementing many annual appropriations. So, uh, there's a list of funds there. I'm requesting that we, uh, amend and supplement, uh, the, the budget as projected there. Most of it is in the, uh, Rotary account, where we, um, have deductions for, um, from payroll. That's in Fund 02.2. I will tell you that the $1 million that I'm requesting in the general fund is, is not in, it, when I look at the budget, I look at fund, the general fund, and I look at the permanent improvement fund, 'cause that's where Inside Village is. We are collecting more in the Inside Village. We are using that, and as I said, to offset our general fund expenses, okay, to do that. So, again, um, it's almost taking money from next year's budget, spending it this year, so that materials and supplies are in place. Um, I know there's some things that we are doing on the technology side, so that, that things are in place over the summer. So, it is not, over, over a 2-year period, it's not increasing the budget. It's just spending it before July 1st, taking it back after July 1st to do that, okay? So, the action item is, on 10.03, is motion to approve the resolution supplementing and amending the annual appropriations for this current year, fiscal year 2025.
Thank you. You've heard the recommendation. Would someone like to make a motion?
Stuff moved.
Thank you, Mr. Rudy. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Chumley. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Chumley?
Yes.
Ms. Samborn?
Yes.
Mrs. Spencer?
Yes.
Mr. Patton?
Yes.
5 yes. Thank you. And I'll suspend. Any further comments, maybe?
Thank you, Mr. Ramone.
Move on to the board.
Moving to board comments. Mrs. Spencer?
I'm packing up. I'm ready to go. I'm sorry. Uh, we just, this being the first meeting after the levy failed, I know it's kind of heavy on everybody's mind, but I do believe we can all work together to find a solution to this, because everybody brings in different takes on it, and I think that we have a great group of people here working on it, and I feel sure we'll find, we'll find a solution that will move our district forward with everybody's help.
Thank you, Mrs. Spencer. Mrs. Samborn?
Uh, I was just thinking here, maybe we could bring the, uh, State Auditor, uh, Keith Faber in to look at a, doing a performance audit that would not cost the taxpayers any money, or the district, to look at everything, to make sure we have what we have, and we don't need any more, or where we're short, so that we can, so that maybe the taxpayers would be more, uh, willing to support the school district. I was just thinking about that just now.
Thank you. Mr. Chumley?
Look forward to celebrating with everyone Saturday.
Thank you. Mr. Rudy?
Happy Memorial Day.
Thank you. My only comment is, is our next board meeting is gonna be June 30th at 7:00 PM here at the Civic Center. Uh, there is a need to go into executive session for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official. I'll put that in the form of a motion. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Rudy. This will be no discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Patton?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Chumley?
Yes.
Ms. Samborn?
Yes.
Mrs. Spencer?
Yes.
5 yes.
There will be nothing that we will be voting on, so we will not be coming back out. Appreciate you guys. Appreciate you guys.